We'll call the meeting to order. Sorry, we're running a little late. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempani.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. You'll all rise and join me in a pledge to the Pledge of Allegiance. Number Heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of the 9/11 incident. Okay, thank you, and I'd also like to mention that September is Preparedness Month, something we here in the Valley need to keep in mind now with the year-round fire season and the other natural disasters, as well as the unfortunate experience on 9/11. One never knows. Okay, we have listed on the agenda that we were going to experiment with a time certain for public comment, and we were going to do it at 8:00. As it turns out, we only have three cards for public comment, so I'm going to go ahead and take those three at the beginning of the meeting, and then we will, if someone arrives later and still would like to make public comment later on, fine, but in order to move the meeting as quickly as possible. So I guess first order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion for approving the agenda?
Second.
Okay, is there, do we want to pull, is it number K, Bill?
Yes, I think we do.
Or I guess we could just go ahead and approve it, and then Brian is here to, we'll bring that topic up right after public comment, okay? So moved, seconded, any objection? If not, so ordered. Let's, we'll go to the Public Communications. Mr. Solorsano, come on down, our librarian.
All right. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. I just wanted to come by and mention a couple of things. Number one, September, in addition to being Preparedness Month, it's also Library Card Signup Month. So anyone out there who doesn't have a library card and is interested in getting one, now is a perfect time, perfect excuse, to come on by. So we encourage you to do that. And then additionally, I just wanted to mention, we've got a lot of events coming up. I was going over them today, and it was a bit overwhelming. Pretty much every weekend for the next, for the next couple of months, we have something or other happening, including, we have a talk on successful midlife reinventions going on this weekend. We have a screening of the documentary film Dark Money. On the 29th, we have, what is her name, Robin Nahin from Firestick Pottery is going to come to the library and do a workshop to allow people to create works that they can then take to her studio to be fired later on. And the list goes on and on. Opera Santa Barbara will be back in October on, I believe, the 11th, Thursday, October 11th, for another one of their noontime concerts. And the thing that I really wanted to mention, though, is a specific event coming up in late October. It's actually going to be in downtown Ventura, but it's exciting for us because it's part of our One County, One Book Program. We actually were surprised and pleased to hear that the author is in fact going to be coming down to give a talk on the book. And he'll be down at the Museum of Ventura County on October the 27th. The time is going to be on that 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. down at the museum. So just real exciting for us, if you're interested, if you've read the book Barbarian Days by William Finnegan, he'll be there, giving a talk there at the museum on Saturday, October 27th. And that's all I've got. So thank you so much, and if you ever have any questions, of course, feel free to reach out to me at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Haven't seen you for a while.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I am here representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition today on a couple of points. And the first one is litter. It's a big problem in California. Litter is not only ugly, it leads to pollution on our lakes, rivers, and beaches, according to Caltrans, cigarette butts, the number one item littered in California, often causing roadside fires, clogging storm drains, and threatening our water quality and wildlife. Other commonly discarded items include plastic bags, tires, household furniture, appliances, foam packaging, cans and bottles, ladders, and disposable diapers. In 2014, Caltrans spent $62 million on litter removal, collecting enough litter, trash, and debris from freeways to fill 9,700 garbage trucks. And parked end-to-end, those trucks would stretch more than 50 miles. Now for some good news. The early litter data from the Coastal Cleanup Day held annually in September shows that plastic bag litter has already dropped by 72% when compared to 2010. Plastic bags now account for less than 1.5% of all litter compared to nearly 10%, excuse me, in 2010. This is a litter success story due to the statewide ban on single-use carryout plastic bags. And not to brag or anything, the city of Ojai was the only city in the county of Ventura to pass its own ban well before the state. And the Ojai Valley Green Coalition has partnered with the city of Ojai about 10 years now, participating with the other nine Ventura County cities to clean up our beaches. I'm turning 59 next year, and it's not going well.
You're so young.
You're right, it only gets worse.
We invite the public to join our efforts to clean out Ojai Creek running through Libby Park before winter rains come and flush the trash to the ocean. We meet Saturday, September 15th, with an 8:45 a.m. check-in at the Libby Park Lower Tennis Court parking lot off South Montgomery Street. And the event wraps up at noon. To get details, folks can visit OjaiValleyGreenCoalition.org, or call Noel at the Resource Center, Or you can check out the City Hall lobby. We, the Coalition, keep, maintains the display in the lobby with information and environmental events coming up. So we have one there with a lot of good facts about litter and also promoting the creek cleanup. Secondly, with 15 seconds ain't going to happen, okay, so, you know, we've been working on dark skies, it's been going great, the county is now getting, the board of supervisors getting ready to vote on an ordinance for the unincorporated area on September 25th. Come out and support it, or give them a letter, go to V C R M A dot org forward slash Ojai dash Valley dash dark dash sky dash.
Come back and tell us again in two weeks.
Ordinance, September 25th, it'll be too late, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a card. Brian, is this the topic we were discussing that you wanted to address, or do you have more than one topic? Just the one? Okay, well then, let's go to the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion. Move and seconded, is any objection? If not, okay, so ordered. We will, now, we had one item on the consent agenda that we do want to highlight, and Brian Aiken from the Historic Society is here. Come on down, Brian.
Hello, Brian Aikens, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I was going to encourage you to vote yes on item K. Thank you. Read my mind. As you know, the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm also joined by Thais Quinn. Thais is our Vice Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you for being here. So each year, we nominate award recipients for the Historic Preservation Award, starting with David Mason. A few years ago, we actually made him our first Lifetime Achievement Historic recipient. We're glad to do that. I'm wearing David's bracelet today just to channel his spirit. So at that meeting, we decided to recommend an award to Don Teedy for all of the work that she did on cultural preservation here in the valley. Don is hiking in Evolution Valley, or may have started there today. Hopefully, she's about 4,000 feet higher. So we are thankful for Don. Also, as you may know, she has moved on from the valley, and so we, or from the museum, sorry, sorry, Susan. From the museum, and we very much appreciated her five years of very, very great service. And then we recognized a business, Twice Told Tails, library, or just there on the side of the library. They are one of our latest landmarks here for the city of Ojai. So I'd like John Lambert to stand up. He's in back there someplace. I told him they could stand in place. So we're happy to recognize them with the other Historic Preservation Award for 2018. And then standing on behalf of Terry Hill, Terry Hill, as you may know, was a 25-year participant in the Historic Preservation Commission, great person, still telling stories up at Provenance. I went over there to visit a couple of weeks ago. I was just going to stay for 10 minutes, and an hour and 45 minutes later, I said, you know, my wife's looking for me, I can tell. So we decided at that time to recognize Terry Hill, Terrence Hill, for a Lifetime Achievement Award. And so I'd like to recognize his wife, Claire. Claire can stand in place. There we go. I guess we should have set up Terry live, too. I forgot to do that in his bed. So anyway, thank you all for your vote, appreciate that very much.
To be presumptuous, how about a picture with the mayor, with the recipients? Why not?
Yeah. They'll be back in December.
Okay.
I'll wear a coat.
Okay, okay.
All these years, I never knew that Claire Hill was married to Terry Hill. You're one of my children's teachers.
Yes, and both of my children's teachers, and Terry and Claire on the swim team. Patrons, we worked many years ago together.
A dinosaur in the town here.
Just a quick comment, I just, I think it goes without saying that these three, everyone involved with the Twice Told Tails, as well as the two recipients, really exemplify what I think what is so special about this community in terms of the dedication to participating in public service to this extent. It makes us what we are, we wouldn't be without, the same without this kind of example. So just thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Brian, for, okay. We have a public hearing, a review and discussion of a draft proposed amendment to the Cultural Historic Preservation Ordinance. Is that? Okay, we have a staff report?
Yes, I'm looking for Mr. Vega. I think we may have gotten to this section so fast, since we, we normally pause at the consent calendar, but we flew right through that. Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I make a real quick suggestion? Personally, I would rather, no offense to Mr. Vega, but I would rather take this up when Mr. Connolly is sitting where Mr. Vega is, at some future date.
Mr. Vega probably would prefer that, too.
So I was just going to say, if the majority of council feels like discontinuing this until he can be present, I would.
I would second that.
Okay, do we have, do we have any cards on this?
Yeah, that's my only concern.
Okay, we do have a couple of cards, but how should we handle it? Do we open the hearing and then continue it in order?
Yes, that'd be our recommendation, we can continue it to a date certain.
Okay, do you want to do any more on staff report, or just based on what the?
Up to council, Mr. Vega is here, if he'd like to give a very brief report, or very brief history on the item.
Why don't we take the, go ahead and open the hearing, take the comments, and then continue the matter, and we'll get into it in greater depth. Okay, Elise, are you, oh, there you are. Come on down.
Good evening, Elise DePoyt, Ojai. Speaking of old, getting old, all of my papers were supposed to be in this folder, and there's not a single one, so where are they? My comment tonight is that I think a task group of some sort should be formed, because if you've seen in your packet how many comments to this ordinance has been, have been submitted, and they're broad and very specific, and there's pages and pages and pages, and I don't see how any, your body, or even the commission, Historic Preservation Commission, can weed through them all. I think it needs a task group consisting of some council members, commission members, staff, and maybe even somebody from the public if they want to join. And go through everything that's been, I'm sure you all have seen all the comments that have been submitted, so I don't see how, just bringing it back to the council as it is, is going to have any effect at all. And with regard to the second part in SEQA, if it's left the way it is now, it will not be, follow, be exempt from SEQA, the way it reads right now, the ordinance. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Elise.
Good evening. I did prepare a lot of comments and a lot of input, but seeing that you're going to postpone the discussion, I think I'll hold most of those comments until then. But I would just like to second what Elise said, that I think there's so many problems with this, and it's such a hodgepodge of different changes, that we really need to start over, because when I read it, I just don't think it's really an improvement, even over the one that you have right now. And I agree with Elise, that as written now, it would have such a serious impact on historic preservation in the Ojai, in Ojai, that I think it would have to not be waived by SEQA, and it would have to have an EIR done on it. So anyway, I would just like to leave you with those comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Could I ask?
Susan?
Would you be willing to be on the task, in the task group?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any further cards. Are there any comments from the council? If not, oh, Brian?
There's a card.
Oh, there is?
I have one, too.
Oh, okay. I thought that, I thought when we said number, come on.
Ding ding.
I'm sorry your time's up, Ryan.
It is, because, you know, I was going to go and get drunk on chocolate-malted ice cream on my way home to celebrate finally getting this through.
I think we found some of Elise's papers. Check this guy out before it leaves.
I checked six times that I didn't leave them at home. So first off, I would like to agree with postponing it until Mr. Connolly gets here. As Mr. Vega knows, I call him readily and say, hey, is Luke in today? Do I get to talk to Luke today? I've been bugging him for five, six weeks now, so I would be happy to have that postponed. A task force. I'm sure you can appreciate that we've been doing this since that NEF Lounge meeting took place in December 2014. These are the different agendas, the different times I've gone through and marked up all of the different colors that we have, all the different versions we have. We have met on these in public session for input from the public at least five times since that timeframe. The ad hoc committee that began this, one of them is now being recognized with a Lifetime Achievement Award, it's how long we've been doing this. The other person that was on the ad hoc committee in developing this is Craig Walker. So I'm not sure if we've polluted this since Craig originally came up with it, I don't think so. And the other one was Rose Boggs. All three are now on, not on the, anymore. Just a couple of things real quick, and I'll be back. Visible from the public right away, a lot of discussion going on in that, a lot of people saying that that's not part of the Secretary of the Interior Standards. These are all interpretations from the Secretary of Interior Standards. Each one of them mentions visible from the public right away. Concept review, there was a suggestion that we do away with concept reviews, and might want to tell the Planning Commission that, too, because they're just as important to us as they are the Planning Commission. There's a, we've talked for a while that we would like to review all historic resource reports that come in. I'm going through the city of Ventura, and what they do, all historical assessment reports go through the city, through the Historic Preservation Commission. And one other thing that Lucinda with the state came up with, this was on historic districts, it was me that tried to simplify it and make it one vote, one parcel. Apparently, that's not up to code with the state or the Secretary of Interior Standards. So 4-8 point 09, I take the blame for trying to simplify that. Four seconds, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Susan?
Do we take up the task force thing now, or?
No, we are in a public, we are in a public hearing, and when we take through all of the testimony this evening, we're going to continue that public hearing to a time, another date. Do we do that on a date certain?
Yeah, I would recommend we can continue it two weeks to the September 25th meeting.
Well, let's say he'll be back in two weeks.
Yes, we expect him back next week.
And then we'll take it under deliberation, and during that deliberation, that will be one of the alternatives, okay?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Okay, so with that, we are going to continue the public hearing to?
September 25th, please.
September 25th, okay? Thank you. Next topic, the banner policy. Mr. City Manager.
Pausing a moment for Public Works Director, Mr. Grant, to come out of the woodworks here. He will be giving the report. We're going to have to get a runner here. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, with regard, while we're waiting for Mr. Grant, I just wanted to point out on that last agenda item, that it's very difficult to look at a redline version when it's in black and white.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Been tested for colorblind. Okay, your comment as well.
So noted.
We'll get all that cleaned up for you.
Oh, Lord, I would say we all concur.
Right, yeah, okay. If there's no objections.
I apologize. We're still waiting for Mr. Grant, do you want to move on to the next item?
Okay, why don't we go to Residential Solar Access Guidelines. Mr. City Manager, is that something else that we?
Mr. Vega will be giving that report, and Mr. Vega is here.
Thank you. So thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. What you have before you is a recommendation to adopt solar access guidelines that were considered by the Planning Commission and recommended for adoption. The solar access guidelines essentially are, you know, we utilized solar access guidelines that had been in place in the city of Santa Barbara, but they hadn't been adopted, so we, we had Planning Commission review them, made a couple modifications, they have recommended them for adoption. And those guidelines are intended to help residents understand the solar access requirements. And then just the second recommendation for this item is to direct staff to return to the Planning Commission to make an adjustment to the zoning ordinance. Currently, for solar access, there's a, it's called a 58% factor, which is a mathematical formula to determine whether a property has adequate solar access. And what several other local agencies do, such as Santa Barbara, is they have a standard 30-degree requirement, which is just simply intended to simplify it so that residents have a clear understanding of what's required, and it's not, you know, these convoluted mathematical formulas. So the, the two items before you are to adopt the solar access guidelines that have been approved by, are recommended by the Planning Commission and, and staff, and then to make, direct the Planning Commission and council to make that adjustment to the requirements.
Bill?
Mr. Vega, given the large proportions of the VMU zone that are exclusively and purely still residential, what is the rationale for not applying any of this to the VMU?
You know, I was not part of the process to develop them, I don't know if they considered?
Well, it's in bold noted on Attachment A, page 3 or 12.
Yeah.
It's a highlighted point, and I just wondered, given, especially given the high proportion of purely residential properties in the VMU, why, what would be the rationale for that exclusion?
I can offer a little bit of light, Mayor, and councilmembers, not on the rationale, but on the reality in terms of how it is in there. It's baked into the existing solar access ordinance, which is also in your packet, page 4-9. The definition states residential zone, that is zones described in Section 102402. So with respect to why the prior council in 2012 made that, or 2014 made that choice, I'm not sure. But in terms of changing it, because it's in the code, it can be changed. It would be a matter of adding that to the direction that staff is recommending to change the percentage in the ordinance to also change the code section.
We have no stated rationale, and that's just what the words say now.
Well, that's not just, we don't know the rationale as we sit here right now.
No identifiable rationale at this time.
With, that question didn't come out of the Planning Commission. We haven't researched the question.
That's all, I just wanted to know if there was a rationale.
But it can be changed, because it's in the code.
Well, at this point, the Planning Commission didn't consider changes to that solar access ordinance. They simply?
It's a grandfathered issue.
And, yeah, and they created the guidelines.
They just carried an existing regulation forward.
Correct.
So, and your curiosity is to have staff maybe see if there's anything in the record that says why?
Yeah.
Okay, that seems reasonable.
Absolutely, we'll find out.
Okay, do we have other comments before we take public comment? Do we have any cards on this? We have no cards on this, okay? So what's the council's pleasure?
Well, I personally have a real problem excluding the residential areas of the VMU from this. I mean, think about if you have a house on Oak Street, and because across the street you're protected in terms of your solar access guidelines and shadowing, if you want to put solar cells in, but because you're on the south side of Oak Street, you can't. And the people on the other side of the street, yes. So I think there's a real problem there. And so I, I have no problem moving adoption, in terms of adopting the guidelines and directing to return to the Planning Commission, but I would like, either we continue this pending an explanation of why the VMU is excluded, or we pass this with a note, with some sort of stipulation that we're going to look at that issue.
Okay, well, we have a motion to pass it, but then with direction to staff and on this one item, that's to continue making adjustments as we dis.
The piece to change that zoning exclusion or not would also have to come back to council, so perhaps the council could direct adoption of the resolution, and then direct staff to bring forward an ordinance to the Planning Commission that would make the change to the 58% to 30 degrees, and also evaluate making the change to apply to broader zone set.
That would be my motion.
Take a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay, but is it, should we do it in the order of finding out what the rationale was before we draw up a new ordinance? Because we might discover that it's okay, if not?
Also an option.
Yeah, okay, well, let's, do I have a motion?
There's a motion, second.
Yeah, I second, but, yeah, I think we'll find out one way or the other.
Okay, well, will the clerk please restate whatever the motion was? I'm sorry, I didn't pick that up.
I'm actually confused, too.
Yeah, okay, why don't we just restate it for the benefit of the clerk, as well as the mayor?
Well, I think we're moving, as helped by Mr. Summer, we are approving the motion subject to the stipulation of a staff report on the rationale for the exclusion of the VMU, and a possible amendment, text amendment to the code to include the VMU if there's not a rationale for exclusion.
Mr. Mayor?
I didn't understand it that way.
My understanding is, we're going to approve what's before us, separate.
Right.
And then, no stipulation, but then direct staff to come back.
Okay, I'm making two motions. The first motion is to approve.
Okay.
Second motion is to ask for a staff report.
Okay, let's have the first motion first, okay? Do we have a second to that?
Second.
A second to the first motion, okay, good. Everybody clear on that? We're approving what is in here, and then there'll be a follow-up motion. Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tempani.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, go ahead.
I'm going to ask that the staff come back with a report as to the rationale for the exclusion of the VMU.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? If not?
Oh, just a question. So if there is not a good rationale? So if there is not a good rationale...
You know, we'll guess, find out. And then we'll decide what the rationale is. It could be judged by each of us differently as to how important that rationale is.
Okay, but my question is then, we amend the ordinance?
Yes.
Then you'd have to, yeah, that would be, require another action. Okay? So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to the motion? If not, so ordered? Okay. Let's go back to banner policy if we have somebody here on banner policy.
We do. Mr. Grant is here.
He was.
Did we lose him?
He was here. He appeared.
Okay, well, we might just keep moving right along then.
He's testing the 30-degree rule.
Oh, he was kidding.
Oh, here he comes. He was having cookies in there.
Yeah, he was eating cookies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That was a quick, I haven't seen you guys get to discussion items that quick before, so caught me off guard. Anyways, presenting the banner policy to council tonight, as you requested some months ago. And the city has maintained a banner over the downtown Ojai Avenue area by the post office since 1983, and that has been administered through the Public Works Division, the department. It's, it's made available to nonprofit organizations and is hung in one-week increments. It's made available to nonprofits as well, as I mentioned, yeah. It's, should be noted that it is a Caltrans right-of-way, so we need an encroachment permit. Every year, we have to renew that with Caltrans, and we obtain that fee-free permit. The current banner policy is that every November, the Public Works Department sends out a note to all the previous year's users of the banner and notifies them of an application deadline. And typically, those same people send out requests to maintain that same week that they previously have had. Occasionally, they need to be reminded, and, and we say if they don't want the week, it'll be put up and made available for other users. This is generally, you can see by the attachment that is on the packet, we've listed all of the typical users of the banner. You can see that most organizations use it for one or two, it's typically two. And what's happened in the past is there's certain weeks that have always been open, so certain organizations ask for, if they can fill those in as well. So the previous policy was always to have, you get requests for two. We try to work it out with everybody so their weeks are handled, and that's worked out well in the past. But those extra weeks, we still have, you can see vacancies on there. I think it's, five different weeks are still vacant out of the entire calendar year. So we've been going through that kind of process for some time now, and it's a $200 fee. And the, we do review those applications to ensure they're appropriate. I think there was one this past year that some people had some questions about, but I believe it was a school-endorsed play, so we did let that one go, but I know there was some questions about that for the Nordoff High School play, which I did see, by the way, it was a great play if anybody went to see that. Talking about, about urine towns, what I'm talking about. So in 2003, this issue was brought up. There was some contentiousness at that time about whether or not certain organizations had allocated weeks that they were requesting, and there was a point system developed. And it seems like a pretty thorough system. And so that system proposed at that time is what I attached to the packet, and I included that on the calendar. You'll see the scoring that was added there. So it involves certain points for the organization location, the organization, the event location, the event longevity, and the total points scored to the right with a maximum of 14. So you can see, as expected, some of the bigger events that we are accustomed to, like the tennis tournament and the music festival would score 14s, along with a lot of other events. And you can see the event date is next to the organization column, and most of those line up pretty well. Everybody's getting the week they're looking for. And I would say we aren't getting complaints that I'm aware of, maybe council has, but I think if you look, they line up well. There was one organization, and that was a storytelling festival. They used to be earlier in the year, then they stopped the event, and then they went to later in the year. And I know there was some concern by that organization that we could work with to try to find one of these dates below.
Okay, that's, that's good, yeah.
Okay.
Right. I think we'll, the council should now...
Okay.
Hang here in the wings. We have a question or two for you.
Okay.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Let's start over here. Did you have, nothing?
Well, I have something to contribute when we deliberate, because I have...
Okay, but you have any questions of Greg or the staff? Okay, do you, is, you have a question of Greg or staff? Are we ready?
Yes, based on my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that city staff puts these banners up and takes them down?
Yes.
How long has the fee been $200?
I, I would estimate 10 years.
10 years.
And there was a fee study done recently through the consultant, and they felt that was, I think it's a 92% recovery right now. It's just slightly over 200.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I actually do have a question.
How about?
I'm assuming this wouldn't be before us if everything was going smoothly, but there must be a problem. Why else would we be getting this?
Yeah, well, we can take that up. We're the ones that refer to the staff. I can answer the question.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, yeah, all right.
Okay, are there, any other questions?
No, public comment.
Okay, yeah. Before we take it under deliberation to the council, is there any, do we have any cards? No, okay. Bill, did you have a?
Okay, I, I could, okay, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I went to, for the very first time in my life, I went to apply for a banner for Earth Day. And as luck would have it, that very morning, someone who always uses that date, I was like two months in advance, had changed their date. So just because I was lucky, I got...
Maybe you were divinely inspired.
Yes, I got to have a banner a week before Earth Day. And so, you know, looking at the letter from people who haven't had a banner, I like the wording of this. "I hope you will encourage the city of Ojai to reconsider its policy of granting perennial approver, approval for previous banner displays and disallowing new requests, which conflict with those already grandfathered in." It seems to me that there should be a way to make this fair, so especially people who have it. What's the word, perennially?
Okay, but you, whereas, we'll take the questions first, then we'll come to, we'll come back to you. You understand what I'm saying?
More or less.
Right, you're, we're getting into the deliberation portion of it, and we're trying to see if anybody had any more, you know, questions to ask amongst ourselves. It looks like everybody's good, okay? Then your suggestion is, is that there's a need for a...
Well, yeah, because, I mean, the person who understands this the best is the person behind the counter, and if she has to adhere to a policy that the same people, year after year, get the banner, and someone like the storytelling festival cannot, and it seems like what we need is some kind of simple wording to give them, what's the word, discretion?
Well, okay.
Somehow, some way to make them, so they can make, be fair.
Okay, I, I had the same concern you had, and I think one of the reasons it's on the agenda, because someone was not allowed to, or was, there was not an available date for their activity. And I guess the kind of questions I had for staff, or at least suggestions, is to refer this to some sort of subcommittee to come back with a recommendation for revisions. One, I think, Bill, you were sort of suggesting this, if it was $200 10 years ago, then clearly it's not up to date, and we're probably, I think, in a conversation with our city manager, we don't think we're recovering our costs. We're not allowed under the law to make a profit out of it, but we should at least be sure as part of the rate thing. So that's something we can do at a, at a separate time. I was concerned also with the idea that there's some sort of implied right of first refusal based upon having been given a calendar date. It almost sounds like, you know, a boat slips in a popular marina where you have to get in the queue, and then people sell their boat rights, ride along with their boat so that nobody ever moves up in the queue. So I agree, we do need to have something looked at that way, and I'm not sure, Steve, did the staff look at that, or that wasn't part of the current review?
Well, what we tried to do is we, is we took, and what Greg did, is he took the, that proposed point system that's in your packet, and he took it and he applied that to the, to the ones that are on the 2018 schedule, just to kind of see if that policy was, was enacted, how it would affect them. And Greg, maybe you could give a quick overview on that. The other thing that I just wanted to mention on the fee was, and Greg, when had they done the fee analysis on that? I know you said there was 92% recovery. Was that, was that analysis? Last year. That was just last year, okay. So as recently as last year, we found that we were recovering 92% of that fee. So I think we're okay there. I think the cost, we figure it's about 220, and we're getting 200.
Okay, and we've been doing, we're working on fee revisions. Is that in there?
Yes, it is.
Well, the cost of living adjustment would bring you up to about 225 over the last 10 years.
Cost of management, yeah.
Don't try to do this at home. He's a professional.
So, so Mayor, I don't...
The economist.
You know, I'm not sure if the, if the cost of hanging a banner was the issue here. I think the issue is access to a date versus access to the actual right to have a banner hung across the highway. So it's, I think the critical discussion here has to be about access to dates. And it seems like there's some priority given to past or historical dates and participants. So I think that has to be looked at. And there's also some of these participants that actually have multiple dates through the year. So I think that has to be addressed also. So I think it's an access-to-date issue that needs to be reviewed, and I'm for a committee of some sort, Mayor. But, but that's the question here. It's not, the, the fee, I think, is appropriate at $200. I don't have a, a need to raise that. But, but I do think that people question the fact that certain people get that banner hung on certain dates, and they have had that date for a number of years. So I think that's the question before us.
Well, the amount of money involved is not significant, so I'm not concerned that it's going to break the bank, but I think the concept of us as a city providing this like it's almost a bulletin board or advertising, we should recover full cost at some point. That's not the pivotal thing. The real question is, is who gets to do it, and are we promoting it? Because we've had a request before the council for some sort of marquee, you know, to help promote the bowl, which, you know, I understand why they want to do it, and here we have a banner that promotes everything else. Why not, you know, since we're a partner in that, is...
I'd like to point out that Caltrans does not allow for-profit advertising, so I know...
So even though they work through us as a nonprofit, that...
Right, so it has to be a nonprofit organization only, because we've already worked with the, the bowl group, and they've requested that, but it's...
Okay, so advertising registration days for institutions that aren't in the city is okay, but, because they're nonprofits.
It's a little slippery, but they've said it's a nonprofit group, and they have an event, so they do let that happen. But I think some of the schools is a little bit slippery when they're advertising. They've got their open houses and events.
Well, maybe Randy's comment is right on, that the, the key thing is, is that we should not have any sort of, I shouldn't say any, but we have heritage programs in this, like the oldest continuous amateur tennis tournament in the United States is held here, and they were the, the festivals, the tennis tournament, maybe the Monica Ross Festival, and the Mexican Fiesta were the ones that used to be up there. Now we have something every week. Maybe the rest of them should be in some form of lottery, where you get a chance every year, and if your date comes up, great. If it doesn't, it's a...
I guess that's, what I was trying to point out there is that, for one thing, there's a two-week in a row maximum required by Caltrans, but also, I think you'll see the point system lines up. If we initiated something like that, this is a very simple system that we could easily implement. But I think you'd find, you get pretty much exactly what we have, but it's an easier way to make it more objective that if some organizations want to try to come in. But I think any of the...
But the point system has a longevity component, so it basically is a grandfathering biased point system.
As four points, right? Not quite as high as organization location or event location. You could down, downscore it, but I mean, I think the conflict that I saw was down there in, in early October, when you've got the Taste of Ojai. Their event is on 10/20, and I think they would, there's always a debate on whether you're better, better to advertise a few weeks before to get people to buy tickets, or whether you should advertise, you know, the immediate week before your event. But they might want Ojai Day, or even the Pumpkin Social, or help of Ojai does, and so those are local organizations. It's very tricky, right, that scoring, how you go about the points?
I'd like to make a suggestion to the council that this be referred to a subcommittee. Randy and I would volunteer to take a look at it, and we'll address that one point as access and what's a fair way to, to rotate on the sign, and be sure it's nonprofit, too. We don't want to go run afoul of the Caltrans. So, and then we can just bring it back with a recommendation.
But I just want to say, I definitely oppose a lottery. I don't like that at all. Move on.
You won the last one, though, with Earth Day. You just didn't know it.
But can I just ask you, why, for example, is Ojai Day, it says banners per year, two? Why would that be?
The banners per year refers to the organization. So Ojai Recreation Department has two banners per year.
Oh, the, okay.
Yeah, they have one earlier in the year, and then they have, yeah.
Now I understand this. Thank you.
Okay, well, would you like to serve on the committee with Randy?
Yeah, yeah, I do. This is only just one meeting, right?
I hope.
Yes, one meeting, yes.
I don't know, I'm going to tell you the way I've been in these meetings the last years.
Yeah, no more ad hoc.
Tell me.
That's the kiss of death.
You're coming.
It never goes away.
I like to do that.
Okay, so if you guys get together with staff and be back as quick as the city manager wants to put on the agenda.
Got it.
Mr. Mayor, just out of curiosity, Mr. Summers, is there any problem with the ad hoc committee of a majority of the council members?
No, it's not.
I understood it to be just councilmember Francina.
That's a majority.
He bailed. The mayor dropped out.
Oh, oh, it's not going to be you now.
He deferred to you, Susan. Yeah, I understood it was...
Is that okay with you? Would you rather have John?
Susan, I'd love to work with you.
Then we're fine.
What kind of a question is that? Great election, you're a gourish, yeah, good answer, Randy.
We'll get that set up.
Okay, so that matter will come back to us within, probably within less than a month, hopefully, right? Okay.
That's a no-brainer.
So...
We got to get that done.
Yeah, we, I would probably say that we could probably get that back on for the October meeting, the first meeting in October.
Okay, we got, we're now to item five, and I think I've got a lot of cards for this one. Am I on the right item? Yeah, we took care of so, okay. Item number five, what...
If you want to, public comment at 8:00 if so we...
Oh, do we have one? Okay, yes. I expect item number five, based on the number of cards, it'll take a little bit of time, but we do have a card here for, under public comment, I'm going to recognize that. That is, is it Claire?
Sorry, I misread the agenda. It said time, sorry.
That's okay.
So, sorry. I was enjoying the lovely city during the time I've been up here. So I'm Claire Grassi from the Ventura County Transportation Commission. I'm just here to let everyone know, inform everyone about the college ride program. This program will, is a grant-funded program that allows students in Ventura County to ride the bus for free. So they have to be enrolled at CSUCI, Cal Lutheran, or any of the community colleges within Ventura County. And they can ride any of the bus services within Ventura County, so the Trolley, Gold Coast Transit, VCTC, as well as all the rest, and are allowed to ride the bus for free anytime this year. So as I mentioned, it's a pilot program, but it seems to be going really well so far. And so we hope that residents of Ojai take advantage of it. We just wanted to inform all the council and public as well.
And they, so the riders have to be riding, but then if they go to Santa Barbara City College, then not?
Yes, if they go to, if they are a student and going to one of these schools in Ventura County and they go to Santa Barbara, that is okay. But if they are a student of UCSB or Santa Barbara City College, they can not ride.
That should be really great for enrollment now. Everybody get down and get your...
Yeah, it's something we can take into consideration in the future.
Mayor Johnson, a quick question. Can you get these passes at the school or do you have to go to your...
Great point, I forgot to mention, you, all you need is your school ID. So your college ID. So as long as you have one of those, you can ride for free.
An ID is your pass.
Exactly.
So Mayor, one quick...
Go ahead. I just wanted to comment that Claire was an employee of Gold Coast Transit District the entire time that I've been on the board, and she was stolen away by VCTC. We were sorry to see you go.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, they did steal me away. And Gold Coast has been such a, had great ridership. They've had almost ten thousand rides in two weeks just through this program. So we hope it's as successful for us, the community.
So Mayor, one last thing. Because I'm the liaison to VCTC, thank you Claire for being here. But here's another benefit of what's happening here, is, you know, it's like selling a car. If you can get someone in the car lot to touch it, feel it, sit in the seat, they're more opt to buy it. And this is an opportunity for the, for the county to get new ridership. And I think we discussed that at the last VCT meeting.
Absolutely.
It's a benefit.
Yeah, anecdotally, we've done a lot of outreach at the colleges so far, and I've had a lot of people come up and say, oh, I've never ridden before, but what do I do? You know, what do I need to know? So we really hope that continues to, that continues along the path. Thank you so much for letting me speak now.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming, yes.
One other comment, Mayor, let's get it on the website.
Sure.
Let's get it on Channel Ten.
Yes, I'd be happy, I'd be happy, I could, maybe I'll, I'll work with some staff here and I'll make sure it happens.
Get it on Channel Ten.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks Claire. Okay. Item number five, review and discussion of potential revisions to municipal code regulating cannabis manufacturing and consideration of options regarding issuance of cannabis manufacturing licenses from the staff. Do we have any kind of an introduction here or...
Yes, I'll, I'd like to make a few comments and I'll turn it over to Mr. Summers, who would also like to give some details as well. So the basic question before the council tonight, as you know, the city has adopted ordinance that we have permitted dispensaries and delivery of, for cannabis sales in the city. Originally, we started out with the medical sales only, and then this year we transitioned to the adult sales. So we now have three dispensaries and delivery services that are operating in the city of Ojai, doing both medical and adult sales. This item was requested by members of council to come, to the council for discussion to see if the council would like to permit going into the area of allowing manufacturing in the city. So this is not an area that is currently permitted, but under the state of California, this is an option that the city of Ojai could permit if you wanted to do that. So again, this is before you tonight, is that because it was requested by two members of the council. And so staff has put together a fairly brief report that outlines the basic issues here. Under the state right now, the manufacturing cannabis safety branch allows four different types of licenses for cannabis manufacturing. Type seven licenses, which allow for the use of volatile chemicals for extractions. Type six licenses allows for an extraction methods that do not use volatile solvents. Then there's a type N license, which is basically for manufacturing infusions, a little, little lower-tech process. And then there is a, excuse, yeah, that's for infusions. The type P is another type for packaging and repackaging of medical cannabis products. We don't think that would be applying here. And then there's also a type S license, which is kind of a shared type facility. Once the primary user is able to obtain one of those other licenses, they can then share that facility among other licensed users. So again, whether the council wants to allow this is really a fundamental policy decision before the city council. It could potentially bring jobs and economic activity to the city. It could also bring some added risk to the community if the facilities were to become targets or if the, particularly if the council were to approve the type seven licenses. There could possibly be concerns with public safety as a result of those manufacturing processes. Again, not unlike many other processes that are permitted or go on in many cities throughout the state of California. But again, there is always some added risk when you're taking, when you're allowing those types of processes that, you know, could potentially, if things get, if things are not properly handled, could lead to some, some serious issues. Right now in Ventura County, the city Port Juaniemi is the only one that has allowed cannabis manufacturing. In Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties, Lompoc, Santa Barbara, and the unoccupied portion of San Luis Obispo County have allowed cannabis manufacturing. And statewide, forty-five cities have signed on to license cannabis manufacturing. So again, it's really before the council tonight is for the broad policy discussion. As, as part of our look at this between myself, the city attorney, and the chief of police, we felt that if the council did want to go this direction, that we would recommend that you only limit it to the type six N and P types. We do not recommend that they go to allow the type seven licenses, which would allow the extraction using volatile solvents. But again, that is an option for the council, and that they certainly could permit that if, if you felt that that was good for the community and needed for the community. We also put together a number of recommended regulations, should the city council want to go that way. And of course, if council gives direction, we would come back to prepare an ordinance and bring that back to council for consideration and introduction, and then ultimately, if it was introduced for adoption. I'll turn it over to the city attorney if he has any further comments.
Just a couple of brief additional comments. Number one is, on the list of other cities in the surrounding areas, I missed Gulida, which has also adopted an ordinance that allows for, among other things, manufacturing of adult use and medical cannabis products. And I'm not yet sure if any have been permitted in any of these locations, but certainly this is a list of cities that have adopted ordinance allowing that activity. I think the rest of it's been covered adequately by the city manager, available for any questions.
One other point, if I could, I just wanted to add, right now, this is not something that we could tax. The, the council could put something before the voters that would put a taxation on the manufacturing process.
Yeah, to add to that point, present state law allow, imposes two types of taxes on cannabis, legal cannabis, that is, a sales tax and an excise tax. The excise tax applies to all cannabis at the point of sale. There's also a separate excise tax applied to cultivation at the point of transfer from the cultivator to the distributor or to the manufacturer. At present, there are no legal cultivation facilities in the city, thus there's no tax there. The sales tax is imposed on all adult-use products, and the city has, and will see revenue from that. And then the sales tax is also imposed on certain medical users, specifically, medical users who have a county-issued medical marijuana identification card, are, they haven't renamed the program there, are exempt from the state sales tax. But not patients with a prescription or a recommendation from a physician, but who do not have that county-issued ID card, even though they're receiving medical cannabis, they are still required to pay that state sales tax. And the city to date has seen substantial revenues from the three operating medical cannabis dispensaries in the city on those patients alone. The majority of medical marijuana, medical cannabis patients in the state do not possess a county-issued ID card, and thus the sales tax has been evident. If the council wished to tax the manufacturing cannabis, and if that was allowed, it can be done, but it would require voter approval. And there's various ways to structure it. Most common would be a grocery receipts tax. And that's what has been done in a number of cities around the state. Thank you.
Randy, do you...
I just, I had a question. How do we, how do we verify?
How do we verify?
How do we verify the amount of money that we're receiving on the taxes if it's a cash-based entity? You know, I'm, as a contractor, I'm offered cash all the time. And my response is always, it's going to go under the construction account, so I prefer a check. But cash is easy to hide. Cash is easy to do different things with. How do we account for it right now?
We've put in a couple of structures, and I'll also defer to the city manager to add a little point or two, but we've required an audit requirement on those, both us and the state, on their annual receipts from the different businesses. And we've put in place security requirements that include security cameras directed at the tills and the cashier spots. So if there was an issue that arose that dictated that level of investigation, that could be looked at. And I'll defer to Mr. McClair to add.
Well, I guess the only thing I could add to that, you know, we, we do have our, our sales tax consultants, and they actually have some rather sophisticated ways of analyzing receipts to see if there are inconsistencies or anomalies. Again, that can be a little bit difficult to track if they've consistently been skimming money. But there are some things that they can do to try to look for that or try to, try to pinpoint, you know, again, some irregularities.
Are we contracting out that service, or we're doing that service in-house?
That's being contracted out.
Okay, well, it's...
You know, just for the benefit of the public, it's not the fault of the dispensaries that they have to do a cash business. We went to all the banks, but there is legislation in process, or something's happening at the state level, right?
There was a measure that was being pushed forward by State Treasurer John Chang. Unfortunately, that died at the hands of the adverse federal government. I understand the state treasurer, which was to put, create a state cannabis bank, that particular proposal has died. But I understand that the state continues to look for solutions to the banking problem, which for those who aren't familiar, lies in the fact that cannabis continues to be illegal at the federal level, and thus, any federally chartered bank refuses to deal with it. The other point there is that certain federally chartered credit unions have been willing to work with the cannabis industry in the states that have legalized it, relying on some guidance from the prior federal administration that unfortunately was rescinded but hasn't yet turned into enforcement actions. So that's very much shifting sands at the federal level on the banking.
I have a question.
Do you, is that...
I have a question. Can I, I want to ask, of the forty-five or more cities that allow cannabis manufacturing, do you know how many of them, do they allow the type seven license? Is that automatic or are there exceptions?
I don't have that information. Do you?
I did a, I don't have that, that information now. I did a survey as to who allowed manufacturing generally, not breaking it down by those four license types. But we can get that.
I'm going to call on Paul, but I think our, our questions are now starting to sound more like it's a foregone conclusion as to what we're going to do and then how to do it. And I think we want to get our public comments first, Paul.
I do want to ask a question before we take public comment. And that is, why does staff recommend that we not have a type seven license?
Well, again, we're, we're concerned that because of the, the potential for things going awry there, again, I think we'd, if we were to do that, we'd, we'd have to look at probably a number of additional regulations. So, but again, we just, we just think that that might be a bit of a fit issue for Ojai in terms of the level of manufacturing that we have here right now. Just because of the potential public safety.
And I'm hoping the public can comment on it as well. But my question is, is it because we don't have staff to be able to do the, the inspections? Is it because there's volatile smell? What, I mean, I'm curious as to why you would specifically say, when it's allowed, not to have a class seven?
Well, again, it's, you know, if, if something were to go wrong, I think you'd be looking at perhaps some significant impact to your public safety resources, you know, trying to come out and address with that.
You're talking about volatility.
Exactly.
Explosion or something.
Explosion, that type of thing, right.
Bill?
Three quick questions. Am I correct in assuming that the same banking problem facing dispensaries also faces any of the licenses for these other operations in terms of cash?
Yes.
All right, first question, thank you. Number two, I, following up on council person Francina's question, I would like the council to see some sort of, of a count of the number of state licenses issued per category. I'd like to see that.
Okay, we can get that.
And, and then number three, are any four, any of these four types compatible with a micro-business license?
As I understand it, any of them can be done via micro-business at that smaller size level.
Thank you.
But we'll confirm that point. The one that I'm not sure about is whether a micro-business is allowed to use volatile solvents or not.
That's my, that was my question.
That line may have been drawn by the state, and that's a point we can assess.
Okay, thank you.
One last question.
Can you say hi to...
I can wait till after party.
The last question for me is, all the counties that you stated that have the manufacturing licensing, how many of them are licensed in medical and in recreational? Are, are they licensing to the same entities?
For this purpose, we look just at the manufacturing, so we'd have to, we'd have to go back and put that, pull that information together.
Okay.
Is that that vertical integration question?
That's the micro-business question.
Right, okay. Any other questions, staff? If not, okay, I've got one, two, three, four, I've got about eight cards here. Bryce Killen? Are you still with us, Bryce? Yeah, yeah, come on down. Or on up.
Thank you. Before I jump right in, I will say I'm in favor of the council adopting some draft ordinance. Obviously, I represent the Page family, and you've all seen me before, and I definitely also support you adding a type seven to this. To real quickly address Councilman Haney's question about track and trace, in addition to the items that you do at the local level, the state track and trace program is actually also an essential part of tracking taxes because all items that are sold legally anyway within the state require a unique identifier, from seed all the way through to sale. And that is designed to actually help the state crack down on those illicit sales, those out of, out of the area sales. And so that's one other additional method. My rough count of the number of cities that are allowing type seven manufacturing or that have a license on the state website is approximately forty. That's not a nailed-down, that was a quick count this evening, but I think that's about approximate, that's forty out of forty-five cities apparently that are all allowing type seven. And to answer your question about the micro-businesses, I believe the state regulations, unless they've been updated very recently, do not allow type seven under a micro-business license. In general, the cannabis, cannabis industry is a great source of good-paying jobs and local empowerment. It allows everyday entrepreneurs to create new jobs and provide living wages to more workers within your community. Bringing cannabis manufacturing to Ojai, even just a couple of facilities, will provide a number of high-paying jobs for skilled technicians and workers that attracts educated professional employees and raises the standard of living within the city. A lot of the concerns about type seven manufacturing that have been raised are on the safety of it. These facilities are as safe as many other commercial industrial businesses that you already have within your city. Many businesses store and utilize volatile chemicals in their, to conduct their operations, dry cleaners, painters, metal shops, just to name a few. But the risks presented by these operations are always managed by conscientious and often state mandated, mandated safety protocols. The situation is the same in cannabis manufacturing. State law and regulations require strict compliance with local fire and building codes, professionally certified closed-loop systems, and explosion-proof exhaust systems and ventilation scrubbers to remove odors and contaminants, as well as proper training. State security requirements also require robust security systems, alarms, surveillance equipment that's tied to your local enforcement agencies, restricted access to the premises, and in the case of manufacturers, no public-facing components, no retail, there's no interaction with the public. Type seven licensing is essential for cannabis manufacturers to create the highest quality products. Allowing Ojai's cannabis manufacturers to apply for and receive a type seven state license will allow them to better compete in what is an ultra, ultra-competitive statewide market, and also provide, allow them to provide remediation services to other manufacturers and cultivators who have cannabis that will not pass state testing. Manufacturers are the only ones under state law who can actually perform remediation. It's because it requires high-tech science and, and chemistry to do it. And type seven licensing will allow that.
Just a minute, yeah, yeah.
Finally, at a prior meeting, I believe where you guys actually discussed putting this item on to tonight's agenda, I believe you also mentioned including self-distribution licenses as an accessory use for manufacturers and other cannabis businesses. A self-distribution license is really just a subcategory of the state distribution license. It allows an operator to move their own products. I think it's vital. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Hang around, you know, there may be some questions later, okay? Jeff Crowe.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I'm Jeff Crowe, Shangri-La Care Cooperative. I'm in favor of the manufacturing of all the types, including seven. And I'll tell you why I think seven's important. First off, these forty, as it's estimated, manufacturers that were producing, using volatile, most of the equipment that's now on the market are closed-loop systems, in that they actually recycle their chemicals. They also, type seven's the only one that really addresses a health issue that's now started to come up in this industry, and that is pesticides. It's a way of scrubbing pesticides and removing all of them. These companies that have forty-plus extraction laboratories to do this kind of extraction, they've been in business for a long time. They didn't just start on January one. As far as I am aware of, and I've visited several of these, I do not know of any type seven or flammable extraction operation that had a blow-up or a safety issue or a fire. But I do know that we've all experienced what it's like in the residential world. fire, but I do know that we've all experienced what it's like in the residential world. We know that we've lost homes, we've known that we've blown up garages, we know that that's a safety issue. I want the sheriff's department to be involved. I want the fire department to be involved in the manufacturing of any of these type licenses. They need to be tested, screened, and create the quality products. The more we can regulate and create the kind of infrastructure of rules and regulations, the better we will all be and the safer we will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Bill Miley.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I live on North Signal Street and have been here for a long time. So, having just permitted adult cannabis sales by our three dispensaries, why are we now moving to add manufacturing, three types, as I understand, before we track the new sales experience to determine the impact on our city? I believe we also now have a testing license. In preparation for this agenda item, I reread the cannabis term sheet that your council approved on March 18th. The section which stands out and which I included in an email to your council was this. The original term sheet approved by your council said the entire licensing effort, including adult sales, was to support the mission of medical marijuana. Is that what we're doing here? Also, I'm concerned that our city did not add and collect additional cannabis taxes on the medical, pass on that, but on adult sales. All we get is the city's sales tax. Was that to help them get started? Obviously, these stores are different than an ice cream shop, paying sales tax. If these businesses are prospering now that adult-use sales are permitted, I believe the council should revisit the question of adding a cannabis tax. I assume now that we're a magnet for folks outside of our city and our county, plus the tourists who buy here. Additional traffic, road use, city staff involvement, potential safety needs and problems fall on city dollars. In the conversation about licensing, it's important to keep in mind that this use carries many problems, public health problems. This is not a benign business. I sent you a file that was titled "The Health Effects of Cannabis and Cannabinoid Relative to Research" by the National Academy of Sciences in 2017, and I recommend that you look at pages thirty-two to forty. As a city, we should be moving slowly and expanding the sale and enabling greater business opportunities. Santa Barbara City just licenses three, I think they can go up to five, for their 100,000 population. We have three for 7,800 and a valley of 30,000, which means sales have to be to folks outside our value to be valuable. So, our council and many citizens who want to see our economy less dependent on tourism, let's start adding cannabis taxes, that would help out. So, in conclusion, my position is, let's get some time data on how this affects our city before permitting manufacture. The council majority says, let's go ahead with it, at least benefit the city with cannabis tax, and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is this Cecil? Mr. Page?
Yeah, hi. Thank you, council and Mr. Mayor. So, I live in Ojai Valley, and over the past three years, I've been taking classes on cannabis extraction with volatile solvents and apprenticing under some extremely experienced people. My mentors are leading phytochemists and chemical engineers in the industry working in licensed facilities in Northern California. I got into the science of cannabis manufacturing when my mom started treating her cancer with concentrated cannabis oils, and we saw her tumors diminish. When we saw her tumor markers drop in correlation to the increase in cannabis oil, we knew this was the real deal. It was extremely hard to find clean cannabis oil at the right ratio for my mom that wasn't filled with pesticides. It was at that moment I knew it was on us. Now, fast forward to two to three years to the present time, where the largest problem in the California cannabis market is contaminated medicine. We've spent several years training proper lab safety protocols, learning about and constructing class-one, division-one safe rooms. We've been learning the proper techniques and chemical principles that make cannabis oils and remediate overtreated cannabis. I recently learned a new specific process of how to get contaminated oil out altogether. In this class, they taught us to use solvent safely and to create the cleanest medicine possible. It involves polarity changes in a chromatography column with certain types of scientific bleaching clays, gels, saline, and hexane. These clays and hexanes are used every day in the refinement of cooking oils. By utilizing this new process, we can remove harmful pesticides from contaminated oils, but without hexane, we cannot remove any pesticides at all. Under state law, cannabis manufacturers are the only licenses that can remediate cannabis oil. Ninety-three percent of cannabis was tested over the pesticide limit in 2018, ninety-three percent, and given that was before we went completely crazy with the testing, but now even with that, it's been twenty-five percent, which is just too much. But because of this incredible development in chemistry, it's so technical to the cannabis industry, many of these manufacturers are still producing dirty medicine. All of our common cooking oils used every day, such as vegetable oil and olive oil, use these same techniques to remediate pesticides and impurities and heavy metals. I feel this technology would model the city's good ethics and intentions of providing a healthier future for those in need. Imagine buying cannabis oil from the medical dispensary for a loved one with cancer, only to find out that the medicine itself is carcinogenic. Some might ask, why not just grow organically from the beginning? We would like to ask the same question to the growers of the ninety-three percent of the entire market's failed test results, but we don't control how people grow. Our job is to make the cleanest medicine possible. Many organic growers don't realize the amount of banned pesticides that keep going up, and then sometimes an organic rating may not actually be enough for the strict cannabis regulations. When it comes to the oil, coming back from a testing lab is dirty, we should clean it, not throw it away. Being someone that's into permaculture along with organic biodynamic gardening, I feel it's pertinent that we are allowed to remove the pesticides out of the oil rather than being discarded. It is our duty to make sure clean medicine is available to the cities of Ojai. Without type seven manufacturing, we aren't able to clean pesticides out of the cannabis oil for your mom or mine. In other, in order to make the cleanest medicines and products, we need type seven manufacturing. There has been no safety incidences in any legal Prop 64 manufacturing facility in the state, and actually, I just learned today, right before I did this, that in all the states, there's not been one incident.
Okay, so you have to wind up.
And using the best technology and best processes available and the only way to provide truly medicine, clean medicine, allowing type seven manufacturers in Ojai is the only way that we'll be able to make clean medicine for the patients. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you so much.
Mayor Johnson, I have a question for the general.
Of course.
Okay. Hearing your, thank you for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
It's educational. Do you think there should be additional local stipulation if we went ahead with a type seven license that would ensure the outcome you obviously prefer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have some specific wording in mind for that?
Um.
Not that you can just do it off the top of your head, but you could break, provide it to the clerk or to staff for us to consider.
So, I'm sorry, the question, what would you guys want? I can prepare anything for you guys.
No, you, you have a particular outcome in mind that seemed to be more specific than just a general type seven state license?
Um, actually.
In terms of a quality of the out, of the, of the product.
It's just that type seven allows us to do these extremely intricate things.
I understand.
So it's just straight type seven is what we're asking for.
You're not, you would not be advocating an additional local stipulation?
No, and just self-distribution, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Jim.
At the request, it's only eight twenty-five. It pains me to see people talking so fast, being so nervous, when they're attempting to educate us on a very important topic, and perhaps this evening, we could just be a little more relaxed if they need another minute or two.
Well, they, they have been receiving a minute or two, in extra.
Yeah, but that's to say, so they're not nervous. I can feel the nervousness, and it's unpleasant.
Every, every Tuesday night, all of us, including us up here, have some of the nervousness. Everybody hang around if there are questions from the council that require additional information, but three minutes roughly is what everybody's gonna get, and we'll come back and revisit if we have lots of time left, but we have, still have other agenda items. Bliss Page.
Hi, thank you, city council and mayor. The first thing I want to do is address your question, Mr. Werick, which is that the state guidelines, what I know of the state guidelines are really a lot more stringent than what the city put out in your study report, so if you just went with the state, you'd be good.
Thank you.
Cannabis manufacturing is the process of extracting the essential oil of the whole plant, so it can be used in various products, distributed dispensaries, and around the state. I'm excited that we're discussing bringing cannabis manufacturing to Ojai. Mr. McClary asked me, why do we need a cannabis manufacturing facility in Ojai? And I told him that, you know, my sister comes to Ojai just to get the Ojai wine because she thinks it's so cool, and I know that I've, what, at some point, Chelsea mentioned at one of these meetings, that people come in and they ask, do you have an Ojai brand? And we don't, so wouldn't it be nice to have one? It would increase jobs, and it definitely would increase income to the city. So, understand that, okay, I became a believer in the medicinal qualities several years ago when I was diagnosed with breast cancer. Anyone who Googles cancer will see the predominantly cannabis oil is mentioned everywhere. So, understand that the medicine I take for my cancer is produced by type seven, and I want to produce the same medicine for other people who have the same cancer. So I read the staff report, and I assume the authors have heard stories of explosions and other safety hazards associated with extraction. Please be assured that the stories you have heard are not the same type of manufacturing that we're proposing. That's called open blasting. That's what you hear people doing in their garages and things like that. We are going to be using a closed-loop system, so there is no volatile gases going into the air. So the state does have even stricter guidelines. Most of the cities have approved type seven because volatile solvents are necessary to clean the pesticides out of the products. What's the point of making medicine for sick people and then poisoning them with pesticides at the same time? While many other products can be made utilizing techniques available under type six, removal of pesticides and creating the cleanest and most pure products requires a type seven licensing. Why would the state approve volatile solvents if it's too dangerous to use? We recognize the council has evolved on the issue of cannabis and, along with the public, and ask that you evolve a little more and make sure that you're not equating what we propose with open blasting. Many everyday products are produced using the same equipment and methods right here in the city of Ojai. If we need to, if you need to evolve on the issue and insist on approving only type six, we'll just have to keep coming back every two weeks, just like they did for the, for the recreational cannabis. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bliss.
Thank you.
Bill Page.
Thank you. You noticed a pattern here? Yeah? Thank you very much for your time and attention to this detail. I wanted to give you just a picture of what a type seven facility might look like here in Ojai. Because of proposed zoning restrictions, there are only a few small locations where such a facility can even be located, and all are in the manufacturing industrial area of town where similar industrial activities already take place. Our proposed facility would be fairly small, actually, likely smaller than you're imagining, probably about fifteen-hundred to twenty-five-hundred square-foot facility. The closed-loop extraction equipment we propose to use is only about the size of a large storage cabinet. I believe we provided some pictures with our earlier written submission. The facility itself is akin to a commercial kitchen or professional laboratory, clean and sanitized, organized and efficient. The extraction equipment will be separated from the rest of the facility in its own room, and features explosion-proof exhaust systems, carbon filtration systems to scrub the exhaust of all odors and contaminants. Only limited quantities of volatile solvents, solvents will be stored on the property at any one time, likely not more than a typical welding shop, warehouse, or high-tech manufacturer would have, minimizing the risks of spills and contamination. Finally, our manufacturing facility would have no retail component, we will not be open to the public, we will not give tours, we are not, we will not have any conspicuous signage. All in all, our facility will operate under strict safety and security protocols and be nearly invisible to the community around it. Thank you very much for your time.
I have one question for you, Bill. The mention of jobs, which is near and dear to my heart.
Right.
How many jobs does your proposed operation, do you think, would generate?
We'd start with two or three, and it would grow from there.
Grow to what?
Could be five, six, and then, but see, we're still, we'd like to ultimately move into a larger facility and grow still from there.
Okay, so half a dozen maybe at some point?
Yes.
And the, and the wage levels, they said would be a living wage, not just?
Absolutely a living wage, for sure. At least twenty an hour, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Or any other question? Thanks. Chelsea, yeah?
Thank you, council and staff. I'm happy to be saying I'm a resident of Ojai now, as well as a business owner, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, it's, wow, that's the hardest, it's harder than opening a cannabis business.
You have those large dogs, you know.
Yeah. I want to speak in support of the, of moving forward with an ordinance for manufacturing. My primary motivation is getting control over my supply chain right now. We used to cultivate back in the day, and we stopped doing it. Partners I had at the time couldn't get a grip on all the issues, and we didn't have enough money to hire more help, so we, we got out of that, and now having to deal only with external suppliers largely coming from up north, because LA doesn't really have their act together, everything that comes in the door is a problem. Everything that comes in the door, we have to scrutinize, is it labeled correctly? A lot of times, it's not, even if it's just the barcode that's wrong, and now it's, one product scans as another. Today, we had one thing, the manufacturer, this is a large manufacturer, that had printed on these gel caps the manufactured date, and they had a typo, and the sell-by date was the same date. So I have, so this has become a bigger and bigger problem for us. So I, I speak in, in support of allowing small cottage artisan industry in Ojai that we love so much, take, take little aspects that we already have here, the pixies, lavender, juice, whatever, and be able to infuse them with clean, pure cannabis oil that we source from somewhere else locally as much as possible, and, and be able to package and label and distribute that to ourselves and create jobs, and those jobs, they are well-paying, and it's not just the people that are actually in the, doing the work themselves, it's the security guards, it's the IT people you gotta hire to come set up your system, it's all the bookkeepers you hire, it's all those ancillary jobs even around the manufacturing. And it's not gonna be publicly accessible, so it wouldn't increase traffic. And I found, just for the, for the record, that since we opened for adult use, we have seen more people from Ojai than anywhere else coming in our doors, saying, we're so glad we can finally come in now without a license, without a recommendation, and it's really a lot of tourists that were here already, so I think that even though there is, you know, it's, yes, we get tourist traffic, but a lot of people were here already, and now they just get to come into our store as well. So I know it's a lot of Ojai residents that are really especially happy to have us here, and that a lot of these people already, maybe they've been doing it, you know, on the side, I've been making some balm for my auntie. I have a lot of people in Ojai that approach me wanting to get their products on our shelves, tinctures, balms, things like this, and I have to tell them, no, you don't have a license, and until you can get a license, I can't work with you. So I think this would just be, yeah, this would be a great, small cottage industry way to open this up to Ojai in a small, tight-in way with the dispensaries as they need it. Yeah, I support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Did I misfile any of them? Okay, great. Okay, well, it's back to the council now for deliberation, discussion?
I have just some questions, if that's all right, Mayor Johnson. I guess this would be addressed to the city attorney. Is it possible to include, I get a couple of little quick questions. Is it possible to include the same kind of local ownership stipulations that we have for our dispensary licenses, for manufacturing licenses?
Yes, if we stick to the same ones that have been previously applied.
Okay. And is there any problem with additional stipulations such as restrictions on making sure there are identification signs only, or saying, let's say, if we want negative pressure HEPA filtering in the space, all those kinds of things are eligible for discussion?
Yeah, any of that we can impose.
We can get that question.
The, right now, as I understand it, for the dispensaries, for example, in order to make, ensure the odor issue is addressed.
Oh, odor.
It's under negative pressure with HEPA filtering, is, I believe, is the requirement?
I'm not entirely sure if the negative pressure on HEPA filtering exists for the existing dispensaries, but certainly it can be imposed on a manufacturing facility.
The exhaust from the negative pressure has to go out through a HEPA filter, is my understanding.
Yeah, that can, I think that's the case for the current ones.
Anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the scope of, of what we can do. That's all.
In, in short, the council can impose any reasonable regulation.
When you, when you said the same language, you said the same language as our, for local ownership, you, you meant we use the same language, not the same.
Same permitty?
The same requirement, not the same individual owners, in other words.
All right, right.
The same requirements.
Right.
Yeah, that can be extended to the manufacturing with the same, the same justification and, and risks as the existing one.
Other questions?
Right.
Okay, Bill?
I have a couple more, there, I have a couple.
Randy?
So I just need to understand the closed-loop system a little better. I'm picturing it, but, so, if someone would like to explain it... I'm picturing it, but, so, if someone would like to explain it, great, but, or maybe correct me if I'm wrong in it, but I'm sensing that there's a container and I'm sensing that the byproduct or the waste is captured and then recycled somewhat like a turbocharger would be on an automobile as far as its emissions.
Yeah.
Is that a simple way of thinking about it?
Yeah, and they're all engineered certified in the state of California. That's the only way, in all the state's regulations, the only way we could do it is if it was a certified closed-loop machine. And what it essentially is exactly, just, it goes from a pump to push the solvent through and it goes through and through the cannabis and then it drops out the resin and then with heat pushes it back to the pot and it never touches air because any of these solvents, when touching air, is that, that's when the issue is, but it never touches air because it's all in that closed loop and certified.
All right, that's one question. The next question I have is, I know the manufacturing of cannabis in Santa Barbara County, you can go ahead and sit down.
Okay.
I'm just gonna make some, you know, the concerns that I've heard is the fact that when they're rotating stock, that there's a tremendous amount of odor that's impacting the community. So, I imagine, this is what Councilman Wyrick was talking to, is how do we secure the facility where none of this vapor, or none of this gas, or any of this can escape and impact our community? Does anyone have an answer to that?
Yeah, so we're.
Go ahead, come on back. Maybe you need to stay up there, young man.
There's a chair reserved for you right there.
Right on. Thank you, guys. So, the main storage, the solution is that we'll have a sealed storage container for all cannabis that hasn't been ran, processed. And then, once it's processed, there is like a strict disposal through like the, they call it toxic and like this whole thing, and they made it very, very.
It's waste.
Yeah, it's waste. And so, we'll follow every stringent, like as hard as we can possible and then also everything sealed and odor within the container that is storing the cannabis prior towards extraction.
Okay. One, no, I'm happy with that answer. I'm fine. The next question I have is, you know, pesticides are introduced by individuals, okay? Can't, are, there are no certified pest-free cannabis growers anywhere locally? Or is it the same as when someone says they're pest-free and they're organic food, that there's no guarantee?
That, that's really the latter. It's unfortunate and they're getting better because of the strict regulation and testing, but as of now, the legal, since we went completely, they went crazy with testing. It was 25% still. And then, so, don't get us wrong, we really would rather have growers just grow organically, like we grow organic vegetables, you know, don't get me wrong, but, and when, nobody wants to throw away a whole crop. Like, if it's just thousands of dollars they worked on, and the other way is that if we extract material for someone, it's on us that when it comes back is tested, if it's bad, then we have this weird thing with them, like, we, you know, here's your cut and this is what you have, but it's tested and you can't make, instead of being able to do the good deed of cleaning the pesticides for the people.
Okay, so, the next question I have is, is there a pharmaceutical grade of cannabis oil? So, I think Councilman Wyrick was alluding to that. What are the ranges or grades of these oils? Is there pure? Is there 99%? Is there, what's the goal of anyone manufacturing? Is it pure, 100% pesticide-free, 100%?
That's what they call this new CAT II testing. There's this big new thing of CAT II testing and what it really means?
CAT.
CAT II, category II solvent and pesticide testing. And what that really entails is that it has like every little eighty frickin' pesticides out of it. Everything's been removed. And also, your question about potency, that's the machinery that does that. So, one machine will then extract a crude extract and then it will be filtered and then refined for then to make it, it's a distilling operation, kind of like whiskey or even more, the oils, the oil industry is a better way to really say it, is the vegetable oil industry. What they do is they first have a really brown gross vegetable oil, but as they keep refining it and distilling it and then cleaning it with the ways that we're talking about pesticide, that's when we get our stuff with the, you know, it's all clean and feels good. Our biggest thing and our biggest issue was, we've had no good clean test results of anything and we've tested everything for my mom, the whole three years we've been doing this and like buying oil and then feeling bad that we bought bad oil and giving my mom carcinogenic oil that was supposed to help her cancer, it just seems like, and that's why it's so, it's so important to be able to take those pesticides.
Okay, so, but without this category II technology, you can't guarantee that you're not gonna get some pesticide or some residual in anything that you manufacture.
Exactly, and now CAT II is absolutely mandatory for all, everything that's licensed and now people can't get anything onto the market. And now, because nobody knows how to remediate pesticides out of the oil, people are sitting on tons of oil that they can't even sell or get people to be healed or even in the recreational market be able to smoke comfortably because one of the main things that comes through a distillation process, it's called miclobutanol, and when it's heated and combusted, it turns to a cyanide. So, miclobutanol is widely used in the wine industry for, to remove mold, it's to keep mold away. But what happens is, nobody smokes wine, but when you smoke, right? When you smoke this stuff, you get a cyanide into your lungs, which is carcinogenic and it just all leads back to that and it's a sad thing, but I think we have the solution and we could be a good role model for other cities, for sure.
Okay. Mayor, I have a couple of the comments, but I'll save them for later.
You just said that the other people don't know how to clean the pesticide?
Yeah, I've actually had, because my mentors are extremely educated with this, but they have people that are coming to them like, "We have this amount of money and we want to start a thing, but we can't remediate or we don't have the chemistry behind it." So, it's just very technical and that's what we've been studying. We'd like to be able to implement it and give Ojai a good name, you know?
Sounds like it's a beta site.
Yeah, actually, what's really crazy is this guy who's a main chemist is trying to give this information to everyone as a free, public website and no one even wants to read it. It's all about money. Everyone's so concerned with money and what we're trying to do is be, of course, we're gonna implement jobs and be there and money is a part of every business, but we're really, really trying to do.
I don't understand, if this is such a product that's in demand and the supply is small because it's difficult to get the purity, why wouldn't everybody who's got all these storehouses full of oil want to pay attention, so?
I know, no, and it's really that it's an extremely hard process and then also, a lot of people just don't know about it. So, people are sitting there with bad oil that don't know what to do and we, and that's just part of it, you know?
We're on TV tonight, so maybe it'll spread the word.
Yeah, right on.
Mr. Mayor, I just have, I just have one question. You're talking about pesticides, but how about herbicides?
Herbicides don't come over within the extraction process, within hydrocarbon extraction. So, if you use water, if you use water or ethanol, you might get some of those over, but mostly, we're looking at pesticides and it's only a specific couple that really come through in distillation that are being so concentrated to where that's that cyanide we're talking about. So, no, not normally unless it's the type six extractions because they don't actually implement the volatile extraction and the volatile is what doesn't take that, it only takes the pesticides and all the desirables.
So, even if it was 100% pure from a pesticide standpoint, it still could contain herbicides?
Yeah, unless you're type seven, those solvents do not take over herbicides.
Mayor Johnson? I just want to make sure I understood what you said.
Yeah.
The state license standard now is a CAT II?
Yeah.
Level of testing?
Yes.
On all volatile oil production?
Yes, everything should be.
Thank you. But I just, I want to make sure my information's correct.
It should be, right?
I just try and understand what the state licensing standard is.
I'd like some clarification.
The state has increased the requirements for testing for all product to be delivered to the market, both medical and adult use, and that has increased the purity requirements for any of the types of product from flour through infusions, gooze, edibles, et cetera. And that's part of what is, has been at issue, is there's.
I wonder what the existing licensing standard is.
A large amount of quote stranded product that cannot meet that standard and this.
But that is the current licensing standard or not?
That's my understanding, is that the state has set that as the higher standard for product to be sold today.
Randy, you got a question?
Well, I just.
Can I answer one thing about quality? And that is?
Can you come closer to the mic?
I'm sorry. I want to answer one thing about quality. There's 86 different cannabinoids that we have found in cannabis plants. Not all strains have possessed those cannabinoids. Some strains only have 20 or 30 different cannabinoids. So, the type of extraction that you do can generate a better quality of oil doing different methods. CO extraction is one of the more common non-volatile methods, but it does not include the terpenes. The terpenes is part of the magic of cannabis, the odor, taste and smell. We now are finding that some of that terpenes is really valuable. The solvent extraction preserves those terpenes and includes them where CO extraction does not, non-volatile. So, in order to really have what is called a full-spectrum medicine, not just a quality medicine, but a full-spectrum medicine, you need to have the presence of all of the cannabinoids or at least sections of certain quality cannabinoids that have been found to help certain conditions. That's the quality of the oil, not how clear it is. Certainly, the pesticides, removing them is definitely, we gotta do that. We also are gonna be addressing heavy metals and that's coming in January. It will be required, it will be called a level three. And everything, including food products, oil, flour, are being tested at this level two. So, the more we don't employ these regulations and these type of very sophisticated technologies, what happens to the oil that fails? Guess what? It goes on the black market. I've had distributors tell me, when June 30th happened, when I had to then identify all the products that were not level two, I had to identify them on June 30th by midnight for destruction. I had vendors tell me, who are distributors, "I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna exchange that product. Will you, will you at least give us some new product?" You know what? There are enough dispensaries out there that are not regulated, we don't need your market.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
All right.
I have a question for the city attorney or the city manager. I read some months ago that Thousand Oaks had considered a testing lab. Is that, is that on your list? And I don't know. I don't think that they've ever given.
I believe so. I, I'm trying to recall, I think they were going that path. I can't recall off the top of my head if they actually permitted that. I think they were going that direction, though. But that was just testing facility, not.
And it was not manufacturing.
Oh, it was testing only?
Yeah, just testing. I don't think Thousand Oaks has looked at manufacturing. I could be wrong, but I have not heard that they have.
Not to my knowledge, but I haven't checked recently.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, oh, I apologize if I just quickly, one thing that we just wanted to verify for, for the council, under the state's rules for type seven, they would only permit, you can only do a closed-loop system under the state rule. So, just so that we have to clarify that, if the council did go to allow type seven, they would all have to be closed-loop because that's a state rule.
Yes, and that, yeah. And we could address any issues in, if we move forward, we could address any issues in the ordinance, including if there's complaints about odor, we can stop the operation. You know, we can write all that into the ordinance. Any complaints, we can, you know, let's just, I'd like to see it, you know, very carefully crafted ordinance, which includes license for seven. But I want to, I believe I'm right in this, that many of these cities don't do a piecemeal like we're doing. They do cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing, retailer delivery, retailer forefront. They're commercial cannabis business license. If you go to the Santa Barbara website, you will see all of this. We've done it, you know, more slowly, carefully, we're a small city, so that's understandable. But many cities do, you know, take the whole, all the different aspects of the business.
Is that what your research shows?
We've seen both models used around the state. Some of the larger cities have accomplished comprehensive licensure of the full spectrum of cannabis businesses, Santa Barbara, Oakland, to an extent, Los Angeles. Other cities, both large and small, have done it step by step by step. Certainly, Ojai, Pasadena, for example, banned everything and then recently, the voters there have approved a limited, very limited set of dispensaries, but not manufacturing, not the rest of the chain. So, it does vary a bit by community and by focus. I mean, certainly, for example, Humboldt and Menasino County have been at the forefront of allowing the full spectrum, less so in other places.
And I also want to remind the council that about a year ago, we got a booklet that goes into the proposed cannabis manufacturing operation that the Page family would like to do, and I think it answers a lot of your questions. I also, this morning, I went to YouTube, I thought, "I've just gotta see a post-loop operat," oh, my mic is off, sorry. The council received a document that answers a lot of the, that has, addresses many of the concerns and explains what a closed-loop system is. And you can also go to YouTube and see tours of these places. I think, you know, if you have concerns, you can easily have a tour, a virtual tour. That's all I have right now.
All right. Other? Just clarification for Councilwoman Francina. Are you suggesting that we put the penalties and things into the ordinance or are you discuss, are you talking about regulations?
I was talking about regulations. I hadn't, I would have to ask the city attorney about penalties.
I mean, our recommendation would be to bake that kind of set of standards of the what happens if the rules aren't followed into the regulations.
Right.
That would go with the ordinance adopted by the city manager under the council's direction, in part for flexibility, as we've seen previously, has been useful in the other cannabis businesses and in part to allow adjustment as situations change.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have two last comments.
Randy.
I, first of all, I have a sense that we're here tonight talking about a specific ordinance for a specific person. I think that concerns me. I, it just seems like we're talking about the Bliss Retail Agency over here versus the city of Ojai and any entity being able to be a manufacturer. So, that's the first thing that kind of concerns me. The second thing that concerns me is the speed of which we're moving. I just, I just have, I, my personal take is we haven't had enough time to actually really see the impacts of the cannabis facilities that we have. That's, that's my feeling right now. And then, if there's, you know, when I hear the argument that we need our own Ojai brand, I don't know, that doesn't, that doesn't go over with me either. If this is a product that saves lives or enhances someone's life, that should be the Branding something so that we can say, "We're Ojai and we have our own brand," that don't, that doesn't turn me on. So, aside from that, like I said, I just think we're moving too fast. I just have a sense that, that whether we create three jobs or six jobs out of this, I just don't think we've, I just, I think taking a step back versus two steps forward is where I am right now. So, that's just how I feel.
May I respond? We're not looking at an ordinance tonight. We would simply direct staff to prepare, prepare an ordinance modifying the city's cannabis, the existing ordinance, to allow for the permitting and operation of cannabis manufacturing facilities. And I believe that will take, take several weeks to do that work and then there's going to be a public hearing. I don't feel like we're moving too fast. Other cities have done this and as far as your comment about branding, I'm sure that's not the underlying motive.
We don't have a motion of any sort, so let's just keep it to the. I just have a question. Are we, I didn't see in here specifically where, are we only gonna allow these licenses for people that already have the licenses for medical marijuana or is this a separate and this thing?
We were looking at it as, well, again, that.
It could be, but, I mean, it could be someone that asked that or not?
You could, I'm not sure what the, what the benefit necessarily would be there.
Well, type seven is not allowed.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about.
The other ones.
If, if we have a dispensary.
Right.
Are we talking, and when we went to adult use, we said the only, the only permanent, the only licenses that we're gonna issue were those that had existing medical licenses.
Right, right. We were concerned with the proliferation, correct.
Now, what are we doing for this? Are we saying that only those that have medical and adult use can do the manufacturing or is this a separate entity all by itself?
We were looking at it more as a separate entity. I don't know that there would necessarily. I don't know that there would necessarily be a basis for trying to restrict it to just the dispensary and delivery services.
And then there hasn't been any discussion on the number of them?
Right. That's correct.
I assume we could limit, that's allowed?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Our initial recommendation was perhaps limit it to three, but certainly it's up to the council.
Yes.
And I had a question about that. If, if we do move forward, I'm not even ready to consider more than one or two. I don't know what the legal, certainly not more than three, but I don't know legally if we have to decide that. We don't have to decide that tonight. That can be in weeks to come. I want to do a little more research on that.
You're not making any final decisions tonight at all?
There's no final decision on any of that.
Not possible with the agenda item.
Yeah.
But they could limit it to just one.
Yeah, legally, you could limit it to one. You face some issues on how you select the one, but you could limit to just one.
Yeah. And as far as your, your comment about the Page family, they're the only family that has come forth. Other people may be interested.
Okay, that's debating the subject. Let's not debate it yet. We don't have a motion.
I, I'm, I'm prepared to try one.
I have one more question.
All right, I'm sorry.
Are, are these licenses transferable? If I, if, if the Bliss's have the opportunity to get this license, and in five years they decide they want to sell it to, I don't know, who's a big cigarette manufacturing company that might want to come in and buy them up?
Ligon Myers.
You know what I'm saying? Do we have anything that restricts-
Or can-
Any of this-
So this-
-from being moved outside of the realm of a sole proprietor and a small business owner in our community?
And local, local.
If the council wished to adopt the same local ownership restriction as is in place on the adult-use dispensaries and medical dispensaries, then that could be one vehicle to solve that problem. You, as presently structured, the local licenses are also not transferable. You need to reapply with the transfer of ownership. The state, I don't believe, has the same restriction, but we could put that in. And you could even set, perhaps, maybe set some sort of a size restriction. For example, no more than one other license, or prohibit an entity that comes in with any other license that isn't Ojai. You could force them to only have one license of that type, for example, would solve that.
And then, Mayor, one last question is, do the, the cannabis that's coming, that would be coming in to any manufacturer right now, is coming, is being, what's the word I'm looking for, transferred in or brought in or, or?
Transported.
Right, transported in. So to me, the next thing that's going to happen is, as soon as we get manufacturing, then someone's going to come before us and wants to brand their own cultivation of it. Again, that's just part of the concern that I'm having right here, is how fast this is, this is moving along. So I think we need to take a step back and, and enjoy what's happening right now, and really see what the effects are on this community.
Okay, well, let's, do we have any-
I have a motion to offer.
Okay, we have a motion.
And I, just in terms of, two reasons, wanting to get something on the table to see, you know, what the sense of the, of the council is. Second, to let everybody know my thinking. So here, here goes. I'm going to move that we approve, directing staff to prepare an ordinance, modifying the city's cannabis ordinance to allow for permitting and operation of cannabis manufacturing facilities with the additional stipulations of the local ownership, non-transferability provision. Number two, that any such facility would have to be under a, a negative pressure HEPA filtering, which means that any air that comes, goes outside has to be, is filtered. Number three, it's compatible with micro-business vertical integration. Number four, identification signs only allowed. And number five, a limit of the number of licenses to two each. That's my motion.
I'll, I'll second, for purpose of discussion, but I have a question about your motion.
Yes.
You have seconded, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, discussion.
I want to be clear on the part about the micro-business. Didn't they say that you can't do license?
I want to be compatible with that. For example, a Type P license is a kind of thing that would be compatible with a micro-business operation. In other words, an existing medical dispensary would be able to, under a Type P license, could repackage, package or repackage medical cannabis products or label or relabel the cannabis product container to go to retail. In other words-
I follow now.
I don't want to, I would, I don't want to set this up-
It's not limited.
... to require-
Yeah.
-a separate entity to do this.
Yes.
A micro-business allows, a micro-business category-
Okay, thank you.
... allows the existing dispensary to engage as a Type P.
I understand. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yes, that's my motion, again, just for preparing an ordinance to look at only.
Okay, other comments?
I just have a question for the, for the maker of the motion. You're excluding Type Seven licenses?
I am not.
You're not? You're including it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well-
Because what was, what was before us did not include it. So we're directing staff to specifically include-
Yeah, Type Seven, I would, I, I think we should look at an ordinance including Type Seven, and that's the one type of license that cannot be combined with other licenses, apparently.
Right, and that's why when you said it had to conform to micro-business, I thought you were taking the Type Seven out.
No, I wasn't. What I meant was that, that if it could be included, it, to allow that, but not to, but still to allow the separate Type Seven.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Can we check with the city-
Meaning of my motion.
A second.
Do we need to check with the city attorney?
Oh, yes. Perhaps there's a point, couple of points of confusion that would require benefit from clarification. Type, micro-businesses cannot operate with Type Seven.
Right.
But you've sought both in your motion. I'm a little confused.
Well, what I'm trying to say is I wouldn't want the motion to imply that micro-business would not be able to say, "Get a Type P."
But a micro-business Type Twelve license cannot exist in the city because the council has not approved those.
And I'm, and I'm suggesting that if we move forward on this, that we include a micro-business capability.
So your motion is also to allow Type Twelve licenses?
It would suitably restrict it by local stipulations, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's-
In other words, I don't want to, I don't want to approve this without, with the implication that if someone wants a Type P, that they've got to set up a separate entity. I think that's unfair.
But that's different than allowing for micro-businesses, which allows for Type Twelve, which allows for cultivation at a commercial scale.
I'm not, I'm not asking for cultivation. Now, let's say-
Asking for a micro-business is asking for cultivation.
Okay, well, then I'm, then I'm withdrawing that. I don't want cultivation inside the city limits.
Which means you do not want a micro-business.
I thought micro-businesses could have local stipulations saying you can't cultivate.
Not if it's a Type Twelve micro-business.
And I withdraw that, and I stand with the original-
Thank you.
All right, please. Okay, come on, I gotta, we're going to be here all night going back and forth.
It's preparation.
I have, I have withheld my comments up till now. Everyone has had a chance to speak. I want to sort of, I won't say echo what Randy said, because I, we don't do anything fast around here, hardly too fast, but I do feel that we go to the end game first when we start directing staff to drawing up laws to do something when we have this many questions. And I haven't seen much in the way of a, sort of a third-party state analysis on any of this. I don't know if it even exists, but we have advocates for something that believe in what they're doing. That's, and as Randy said, it, well, I don't know who said it, but it, the Page family seems to be steeped in this and, and understand a lot more, certainly than any of us do, and certainly more than I do. But they are advocates for something. And before I be prepared to be directing staff, because this seems like it's a fairly momentous decision with quite a bit of workload for council to do their, pardon me, council for staff to do their proper due diligence, that crafting an ordinance to achieve this before we've ironed out the details, whether it's a Level Seven. My concerns are public safety nuisance, which has been commented on, the closed system, and it sounds like there may be some solutions to that. Half a dozen jobs are nice, that's, and I like those, but that doesn't weigh heavily enough to be deciding to draft an ordinance exclusively for that. It sounds like we've got sort of either a mini or potentially a moderate-sized refinery process that we're discussing. So when we get back to the public safety issues from the fire department standpoint, the building and safety standpoint, those probably can be worked out, but I don't feel like I want to give direction tonight to staff to be crafting ordinances until we get some feedback from public, the public safety agencies, the Building and Safety Office, and if there are any studies being done by someone other than people who are going into the business, I'd like to see what, what conclusions, you know, like an impartial laboratory or economist has to say about these things. I would think by now that if this is, if, I couldn't remember what Cecil said about the percentages, but it sounds pretty severe of the amount of waste and being tossed away of, of good material. And I would think that the private market and the profit motive would be promoting this and want to use these systems, which seem to be not well-known or well-accepted for monetary reasons. So I, I have to have answers to those questions before I can move forward on this motion.
Mr., may I respond?
Certainly.
The way you're going to get answers to those questions is to move this forward. We don't necessarily, when it comes back to us, it may not be ready at all for an ordinance, but why can't we include in the motion all the concerns you've just mentioned? Perhaps, you know, if we put a stop to this now, we're going to have to deal with it a few months down the road. I don't, and, and-
Okay, I don't think, I, maybe I didn't make it clear. I was-
We're here to serve all the members of the public, you know, and there are-
Okay, stay with one point here for me, and I'll answer you. Okay. What I am saying is, is crafting the enabling legislation to do something before we work through all the details of what it is. The writing of the ordinance, I don't think is going to be the biggest part of this. That's the end game, where we say, "Okay, we're going to do this, and these are the ground rules." And, you know, we need to get there at some point, but we're sort of starting out with directing the ordinance to be crafted first, and then we work through all this. I don't think doing it in a public hearing is the, is the best process. I think we need to have the public hearing, but after we have sort of the, what I call the third-party impartial research that can underline what Cecil and other people have said here tonight, you know, not that I, I doubt you, I just don't know enough about the subject, and it seems to me we don't really have that right now. I saw this nice booklet, and it looks like me-
We've had this for a year.
I know, and that did not come from a third-party, yeah.
So I think we should vote on, on Bill's motion.
Okay.
And then perhaps you'd like to make a substitute motion for staff to investigate all the things you've mentioned, so that this doesn't, you know, it just-
Okay, you'd like to vote on the motion, that's fine.
Okay, and then I, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a question. And this is for, for staff, maybe specifically Mr. Summers. This is legislation that we're asking you to come back to us with, that we then have an opportunity to be fully vetted in a public hearing, without any regulations attached to it. It's just an, an ordinance amending our municipal code, and it would be subject to whatever kind of enabling regulations that we promulgated after we debated the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Yep. So what we're doing, what we're doing tonight is asking you to put together, hearing the concerns that the mayor has and Councilman Haney has, to come back at the time the ordinance comes back, but we still have not decided on the regulations. And if it does come back to us, and as a result of the research that were provided at that time, we don't have to pass the ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so your point, Paul, is, is that that provides the framework in which to conduct the debate? I guess that's what you're-
Yes.
That's it, yes.
So let's vote.
Was the motion seconded?
Yes.
Yes, we have a second.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any further comment? Okay, will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Protem Haney?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and that will be the framework in which we will then proceed. That's fine. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. The ball is advanced. Let's keep talking.
In the meantime, maybe before, you know, we can, I'll commit to reading this.
I read that a long time ago. That's not, not the same.
Thank you, that's good.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
We can read, we can read it again.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, very good. Let's see, we now have number six, review and discussion of potential amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Mr. City Manager, what do you have for us?
Yes, Matt Summers will be giving a brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. McCleary, before you, as a brief second, would you like me to draft an ordinance item? This is for the ADU ordinance, a minor tweak that arose in the course of some discussions earlier this year on a couple of complicated contested properties. The basic question is, if you turn to page six dash six, which is also Attachment A, page two, which is Table A, this is the table in section ten to seventeen oh nine, that sets forth a variety of development standards. The basic question is whether the council wishes to adopt an ordinance modifying this section to add a footnote that would define the term "legal" as used in existing legal primary unit, to be legal and conforming, or legal and conforming and legal non-conforming. That's the basic question. To provide a bit of background, as you'll recall, a legal and conforming structure is a structure that was built legally with permits and remains legal under the current zoning code. A legal non-conforming structure is a structure that was built with permits and in compliance with the code applicable to the time it was built, but over time, often many years, as the zoning code has changed, it has become out of code and is thus non-conforming, but because it was built with permits legal at the time it was built, it is legal non-conforming. The typical planning understanding of the phrase "legal" as used in the land use context is legal and conforming. The question arose in the course of some prior discussions, whether the council meant when they adopted the phrase "existing legal primary unit," that to mean existing legal and conforming primary unit, or else existing legal and conforming and legal and non-conforming primary unit. As a point of, it's, it's a bit like we saw with President Clinton, what is the meaning of "is," but there is a real substantive distinction between a legal conforming building and a legal non-conforming building, and it amounts to a policy choice, hence we've brought it forward for the council to decide. The only other point that's worth noting is that properties that were made, that were brought through the second unit compliance program that were illegal, they were built without permits, or without real permits, that were then rendered legal and non-conforming through the second unit compliance program, would not then be eligible for a third bite at the apple to shift again to legal and conforming. This would just be for existing properties that were built with the benefit of permits, but then over time were rendered non-conforming. So staff recommends that that be the decision, the recommendation, that the council directs us to add a footnote that would define legal as used in this section to be legal and conforming and legal and non-conforming. End of report. Thank you.
You're saying the staff recommend-
Mean both.
The staff recommendation is that we, it'd be legal, non-conforming properties would have the ability to-
Yes, the staff recommendation is that legal conforming and legal non-conforming properties would be able to benefit from that base-
And that was after what date? What, what, was there a date?
There's no date built into that. It's, it's any property that was built with permit, that is, this is all single-family houses. Any single-family house that was built with permits that has been rendered non-conforming as a result of the zoning code change would be able to, if they met the rest of the requirements, have a second unit, or an accessory dwelling unit. That's, that's recommendation. The basis for that policy recommendation is the existing housing element, which dates a preference for accessory dwelling units.
But to get credit for, or to expand the use of accessory units? Bill?
I'm just going to move approval.
Were there any comment cards?
I'm just going to move, huh, what?
I was going to say, are there any comment cards? But I'm guessing none. Sorry.
Yes, I'm moving seconded. And it was a staff recommendation that this would be the, okay.
I think that's good, yeah. Okay.
But if, so a legal building can do it, and this is expanding, a legal conforming building is expand, or stretching that to allow legal non-conforming, that at one point, we're legal conforming.
Right.
That's easy for me to say.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, so move, Bill?
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Okay, so this will help us provide opportunity for additional housing and get credit for it? Okay, if there's no further discussion, call the roll.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Intuitive, what?
No, I had a turn there.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Can we have a one-minute break, please?
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Okay.
Thank you, we will draft the ordinance and bring it to the planning commission.
Okay. I don't know, did you want to be here for the League of California Cities? Go ahead, it's not...
I don't have to be, but I definitely have things at the end.
End, okay, go, okay, well, we'll go ahead with the league and then we'll finish up. Okay, Mr. City Manager, it looked like all of the league positions are things that are benefiting local self-rule and...
Yes.
Revenue sources.
Right, right, yeah, we would recommend that council give direction to the voting delegate to vote in support of those as drafted.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion?
Nope.
No? Okay, who's our representative going to...
Randy.
I'm alternate, he's the man.
Okay, so you guys are going to go down and...
Bill and I.
Work the lobby on this, okay?
You're the main man.
Okay.
You might be the main man.
Do we need, do we need a roll call on this? I guess it's legislative advocacy, advocacy, or can we do it without objection?
We are not adopting the resolution, so yeah, I'm fine with just, without objection.
Okay, I'm sure there's no, okay, very good. Motion or the direction is ordered to the delegates. Have a great time in Long Beach. Is that where you're going?
Is it Long Beach?
Long Beach.
The little Friday.
Okay.
Thursday morning, if you want to.
Okay, and we are now...
Or done.
Down to the city managers.
So a couple of things I wanted to report on. One, the disaster council met last week. We wanted to recoup, we wanted to meet, we've been meeting quarterly, we wanted to regroup. Obviously, we're getting close to the winter months coming. We know that we're still in the, basically, the year one of recovery from the Thomas Fire. It's actually good that we're able to say that we are in year one of the recovery, which means that they've actually seen one year's worth of growth up in the burned area, and it typically takes about three years before you start to get out of that, you know, area where you're really concerned and with additional impacts from mudslides and whatnot. So it is good, we are moving forward on that. But again, we're, we'll be putting a statement out in terms of all the efforts that we're doing. We've been working with the NRCS and the county, of course, to try to make sure that we're addressing the geological issues around the city, and to make sure that we don't get in a situation where, unfortunately, like what we saw in Montecito, where we have, you know, severe mud flows and that type of thing. So that continues to be high on our radar screen. So again, we'll be putting out a detailed statement on everything that we're doing with that. Also, again, just want to continue to put the word out there, again, always for the public to do what they can to be ready in the case of a major disaster, especially if it's a severe disaster, we may not be able to reach you in several days to provide assistance. So again, always important that people make a kit and be prepared, have the essential things, their medicine, food and water, to be able to survive for a few days if we're not able to get help to you. So, and then also, we're putting some advisories out in terms of, to try to make people a little bit more aware, to make sure that they have checked, to make sure that they have all the proper insurance coverages for their home and their property, to be able to get by if they find themselves in, affected, as we get into, hopefully, either not affected by the winter storms, or, and then it seems like we're in a year-round fire season here now, too. So, so those are always threats that we're continuing to deal with. And then the other thing that I wanted to briefly mention, it was kind of, we try to keep our eye out for things that come across our desk, and I thought it was very interesting that we received a bulletin from the state's Department of General Services, and they have presented us their 2018 Drive Green California brochure, and they are now starting to push through their program. They have light-duty cars, trucks, vans, SUVs, medium-duty trucks and vans, and heavy-duty trucks available on the state contract for purchase. And again, these are green vehicles, zero-emission vehicles, plug-in hybrid vehicles, that type of thing. So the state is getting on board with that, and I did give this to our Public Works Director, and we'll be watching this, the future, as we start to look at replacing our fleet going forward. So a couple of new options there. I just want to report that because I know when we had last looked at purchasing vehicles, we had checked in there was no program like that at the state, so this was welcome news.
Okay, right, so that gives us both the advantage of price and the fact that there'll be enough market demand maybe to...
Right.
Keep pushing that along.
Right, and we still think Ohio is about as ideal a place as possible, I think, to be able to utilize those types of vehicles. So really, really think that would be the benefit to us, so.
Okay. All right, Paul, nothing?
Nothing.
Susan?
We're already there?
We're there.
It's wonderful. This is where we bring up new things?
Doesn't have to be new things, reports is what it is.
Okay, I have some reports, but do you want to do a report about Pat Weinberger? Shall I do it?
Oh, on the 23rd?
Yeah.
For the plan?
You can do that, okay. Okay, so I need the council's help with something, and City Attorney, you can let me know if I can discuss it here. For the last few years, myself, Bob Daddy, and members of the Complete Street Committee have tried to get at least an experimental stop sign at the corner of Summer and Grand. I know exactly where I want it because I drive there a lot. And I've, we've observed traffic there, there have been a couple of bicycle accidents with kids going to school. So Greg Grant said the only way that he could do it, maybe not the only way, but in order to do it immediately, or in the near future, would be if council gave direction.
So it's a future agenda item?
So can we make that a future agenda item? And he can, okay, thank you. Okay, so that's that, and then my other thing is about traffic, too. You're probably all aware that, this is just a report, it's not going to go on a future agenda, I don't think, at least not now. You've probably all heard all the complaints about traffic going too fast on Creek Road. In the last few months, four or five deer, a couple of fawns have died, and Kitty took a photograph of one. And I've been hearing about this for years, but the problem has reached, what's the word, a boiling point. So myself and a couple of residents are going to meet with Steve Offerman tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, and I will email you our Creek Road traffic calming safety requests, and at the next meeting, I'll give a report on how that goes.
Thank you.
But they've been, there's two very longtime residents, one of which had two deaths in front of her house, the worker and another person that was killed there. So it's a, it's a problem with multiple causes, and the city and the map has, I may ask to put that on a future agenda, too, because there are things that we as a city can require of our advertising, you know, so that people don't speed on that road. Am I getting too deep into this?
No, we were just confirming our facts.
Okay.
Isn't the majority of that road in the county?
Yes, but the majority of the people live in the city that use that road. And the other problem is that now, when people Google, or not, it's not the word, it's not the word Google, but when they do a map, when they do, when they search how to get here, it directs them down Creek Road. So one of the requests of the residents is that on our advertising, because these are people who, you know, who may be first timers in Ohio, we can do something so that our city, you know, our Libby Bowl events, events that we have control over, and perhaps we can talk to the hotels, that they direct, that they make visitors aware that we have a narrow two-lane road, part of the, part of the privilege of visiting our city, part of the responsibility as a courtesy, is to drive slowly, adhere to the speed limit. We need to make visitor, we need a concerted effort to make commuters and visitors aware of the problem.
To summarize the report, there is a meeting tomorrow with the supervisor, and I've met with two of these, and I live down there, so I know what they're talking about.
And Greg Grant lives...
Right, and Greg and others. But it is a difficult, there is, it's a complex problem, but it doesn't mean we can't do something. And so Susan's going to go down with them tomorrow, and we're going to continue to pursue to see what can be done. And there are some things we might consider doing in the city, because the irony of life, the deer that was dead in my, basically, my front yard was right beneath the deer crossing sign.
Yes, yeah.
And the speeding comes down the hill, right past our police station. So anyway, it does need attention, thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I'll email you some follow-up information, yeah.
Okay, is that it?
The city department, of course.
Very good, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So we had our, we had our final, I believe, Adcock, Ad hoc Committee on Libby Bowl today. We had split the commission into three different groups to assess and address different aspects of Libby Bowl. And so we got everyone's information, all the input, and James Vega and I, I was trying to figure, I was trying to remember James' title. I think it, is it James, the Assistant City Manager?
Depends on which hat he's wearing this day, so...
You know, is he de facto everything he's, but the, so him and I are going to be finishing up that report, and we'll be bringing it back to council for our final assessment of Libby Bowl. Ted?
Okay, Bill?
Two things. One is I circulated a, something that came in through my service on the Ventura Regional Sentation District Board regarding potential grant applications for park additions, and I was wondering if anybody else on the council has an appetite for looking at, maybe going after a grant application of, if it becomes available and funding, to reaffirm the master plan for Libby Park, and maybe try to find some outside funding to try to implement that, whether there's anybody else interested in looking at that.
Bill, I would look at it with you.
Yeah, well, I'd be interested in it, but I assume that after November 6th, to see whether or not we have any money to go after, but yeah, there's, there may be some opportunities there for us.
Okay.
Okay, you got another?
Yeah, one other thing is, and it's really a frustration. Remember that when we, in this, I know fences and hedges is coming up soon, but I want to remind everyone that we never suspended enforcement of fences and walls, and there is a proliferation of fences and walls in front of properties in violation of the municipal code. We got to be honest, there's, for a while there, there was an issue with, in my opinion, of how staff was misreading the code. Then there's, you know, on a complaint basis, complaint-driven basis only, under this, I think, almost a staff feeling that because we've suspended enforcement of the hedges until we review things, that that also applies to fences and walls, which in fact, it definitively does not. You know, we paid a lot of money to Sergeant Town Planning a while back to emphasize the importance of main, of the fences and walls issue in terms of not screening fronts of homes with fences and walls, and they are frankly proliferating. On top of that, we have fences being installed in public right-of-way in the Arbolata, and I don't see any, any reaction from, from the city in terms of protecting its public right-of-way. And it's just a frustration with me, and I'm beginning to think more and more that the, and the city manager and I have talked about this, is that I think the complaint-driven approach is, it really breaks down, and this is one example where it does. And I'm not saying we should all go out and cite people and demand things, but at least the people ought to be notified and be made aware that they are not in conformance with the state, with our municipal code. And I think we ought to think about when we, if we're not going to enforce things, we at least, on the fences and walls, and if we decide what we want to do on hedges, that we, we at least have a deal where we, you know, there's some kind of a notification on the property when it's being transacted, so buyers understand what's going on with the selling condition. And then frankly, you know, I continue to be approached by people who are increasingly irritated at the fact that they can't see oncoming traffic because of hedges growing in the right-of-way. So I just want to express my frustration and leave it at that.
So the hedges issue will be coming back. We can and we have taken enforcement action against fences that have been illegally installed or in the process of being illegally installed. I understand the concern about...
Or proliferating.
About the complaint base, so we're going to need to have a discussion about how we can address that best going forward.
Mr. Mayor, you know, the one that was on the corner of Park and Grand, that was taken care of.
Right.
It took a long time to do it, but we did enforce that, and it's now, that fence is gone.
But you could just drive around town and you see examples of new ones being built in clear violation of our municipal code, with apparently no communication from the city whatsoever after they do it.
I agree with you.
There is a problem, and that problem is there's some glaring language in the code that made my fence illegal.
But you're not the, you're not the issue with all...
No, no, but there's hundreds, you know...
We're going way from now from reporting back to...
Okay, I'm not, I'm not talking about a specific case.
We'll need to bring it back.
I'm just talking about, in general, they are, the frequency by which you see new construction...
Yeah.
Of fences and walls violating our municipal code, and I think eroding the character of our community as described by Sergeant Town Planning is occurring, and I think the complaint-driven only approach isn't working. That's my opinion.
Yeah, well, I would agree with you.
I agree.
And it is also true that people are even planting new hedges that will in time be in violation.
Exactly.
You know, so my suggestion when the staff brings this back is that we start taking it bite-sized, and the very first thing we, I think we should be able to do without creating too much of a furor, is to either notice or send, send the Public Works crew by on at least major corridors, safe, you know, we're putting in sidewalks at great expense, and there are places all over town where the hedges and the stuff are growing right across and blocking the sidewalk. So if we pick out just a few of them, and we don't have to do it all at once, and start nibbling back, because if we're, if we're not even taking care of what's already happening, then why wouldn't some homeowner decide, well, I want privacy, and they make it worse?
Exactly.
So I think you make a good point, Bill. Okay, is that it? I got a couple, three here. I want to repeat again that September is preparedness month, and we did have the disaster council meeting, and we're all in agreement that we'll meet quarterly rather than annually. There is going to be a tabletop disaster preparedness drill, we hope by, what, middle of November at the latest, to kind of go through and remind ourselves of what we do well and what we maybe need to work on. So that's a good thing, but one of the key things that I think we do have to keep emphasizing, city manager mentioned it, the fire and police do rake, this idea of ready, set, go, we have to just keep talking about it, because people have these, this attitude, they don't need to worry about it because somebody's taking care of it. Well, up to a point, we can take care of it. There are going to be situations where it's shelter in place, survive on your own type of thing, and it's not a question of when, or I mean if, it's when. The irony of irony is talking about fracking in this area when you read the reports on Oklahoma, who is not noted for having been earthquake country after they fracked their oil fields, they've had hundreds of quakes, and I mean not major ones, but we're in a place where, you know, we can expect it at some point, and the people have to keep being reminded. It's not easy to keep it in our consciousness, it's not pleasant. Public comment. Tonight, we were going to try to do public comment at 8:00. I wanted to follow Paul's suggestion, I think that had merit, the only reason we didn't is we only had three cards or something. But I think if we try that, let's do it, even though we haven't got our protocols changed, and we'll see how it goes. And then lastly, I wanted to mention Patricia Weinberger, one of the awardees for, you know, preservation of the valley and the history of the valley. Pat, her birthday is September 23rd, and so Alistair Coyne and Phil White and several of us have gotten together, and we're, we've had a plaque cast. I think Greg Grant's working with the group, or at least Ruben or somebody's going to do this, this weekend, I think they're going to meet for the preparation for the mound. And then on the 23rd, her birthday, there's going to be a little ceremony out there at the Y. That was that little memorial park for parents who lost children, and Pat being somebody who survived three husbands and two children, which she was a tough old bird, as she would say, but there's a downside to that, so. Anyway, there's going to be a nice little ceremony to...
And the time?
10:00. And it'll be on the 23rd Sunday. So if you can make it, I'm sure Pat will appreciate it.
Don't adjourn the meeting yet, I have a question.
No, I haven't, yeah, okay. Question?
Well, the question is this, I never understood the 8:00 time certain for public comments, how does that save time?
Okay, here's the idea, is that we go through before we get into the deep, you know, like public hearings or whatever, and we get a lot of the items that, you know, people in the audience keep throwing cards in at us, they're going to have a chance to comment on that, but by the time we get, say, to 8:00, there is a fair chance that most of the people who wanted, first they'd be here, and they'll get their cards in instead of running up at 7:30, like they do while people are making comment. And then the idea is, is that if they have their chance to speak earlier on the items on the agenda, then when it comes to public comment, they won't double-dip or forget where they are and have talked twice that evening. I think that there's, it's possibly that that could work, and we do need to do a little bit about that, because public comment is not intended to be study session and education. It's meant for them to get up and concisely tell us what's on their mind that's not on the agenda, and we make a note of it, and then do whatever we do at a future meeting. It should not be just sort of a gab fest, and those, I think maybe we should put the buzzer back on, because a lot of people don't see the light. Tonight, you know, you're concerned that the young man was nervous. He was already talking before we even turned the light on, and then went beyond when the light went off, which is okay. Some people are nervous, other people were very casual up there. So we want them to feel comfortable, and we want to hear what they have to say, but we also need, in order to be fair to everybody, some people come well-prepared, they get it in in their three minutes, and other people will go on for as long as we let them. So it's not meant to be free speech night at the park, it's meant to be an opportunity to let the council know for future agendas. That's the concept.
Okay, well, I don't think, I, items on, I think we need to make clear to people that are new about items on the agenda, you know, maybe we're trying to do that, but my question was, and as far as people being nervous, I think what makes them nervous is that buzzer, but that's a different...
Well, we haven't had a buzzer so far.
Well, I mean, that light, that whole light thing, and I just thought tonight, because it was early, and, you know, it was so early.
Right.
But my question was, how does that save us time? So it doesn't really save us time.
Yeah, it does.
How does, I don't understand how it saves us time.
What you find is that somebody will come up...
Don't answer your own question. You've asked the question that Paul explained.
Somebody will come up and talk in public comment, then go sit down and come up and say exactly the same thing on an agenda item.
But we can put a...
Happens all the time.
Why don't we put a stop to that?
Because you don't, you're in the middle of it in public comment, and you don't